Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting of 8 April. Today, we're going to cover a number of topics that you've heard us discuss before. One, the recent audit report that we had, should recall a couple meetings back, we talked about all the various findings and both the treasurer and the accountant here talked about our way ahead. Also talk about the fiscal year '15 budget. Talk about the warrant for town meeting. We've had some contractual issues with Town Hall Garage Project and discussing the progress there. We have a green community grant submission reviewed briefly. Also be talking about some of the other, some other topics, agricultural building fees, a couple of water and sewer issues, at least begin a dialogue on water and sewer rates. We're having an issue, some areas even covering our operating expenses, much less our capital requirements. Also, we had a recent water main break and we're going to talk about kind of a way ahead on that. Finally, some administrative items and that includes a constituent issue concerning drainage on Elm Street, committee vacancies, and introduce, and we won't certainly not going to finalize anything, about a charter for the Board of Selectmen. We're going to change the sequencing. Our first topic will be some of the water and sewer issues, but how did that, any announcements?
Not at this time.
No one's here for community forum. One quick item, is there a motion to approve Board of Selectmen minutes of 25 March?
So moved.
Any other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
First topic is our water and sewer rates. Tony and Mike, want to come up to the microphones? Tony Luskowski, our Highway Water Department Chief, and Mike Oll from Comprehensive. One of the, one of the issues that particularly comes up at budget time is looking at the revenues and expenses associated with our water and sewer system. And in some areas, we are not keeping pace with the rate structure with simple operating requirements. And in both cases, water and sewer, we've not been making a provision for some, setting aside some funds for our capital requirements. And today, we're going to be talking about, talking first about that issue and perhaps an approach way ahead and suggestions of how to frame the rate issue. Mike, you're going to take the lead on that?
Sure. Good morning.
Good morning, Mike.
We had a few years ago, as part of a Mastiffi Water Conservation Grant, been able to have a very focused look at the kind of overall water capital infrastructure plan and then look at different rates in terms of what would it take to cover the costs, including the operating cost. Look at, over time, at the time, it was transitioned to an enterprise fund, looking at the capital costs, the debt service costs, which are, if I remember correctly, covered under the general fund presently. So we did that for water. At that time, I believe the decision was made and it's reflected here in some of the history on the water and sewer rates. The water rates were adjusted obsolete. We had made a decision to maintain the current rate structure, which is a minimum charge for a certain amount of minimum allowance of water. And then all water use beyond that is charged at a single rate regardless of how much water is used. We had considered or presented at the time alternatives which are used throughout the industry, which as you, would be an increasing block, so as you use more water, you might use a high, be charged a higher rate. That's often used in communities that have a lot of, say, lawn irrigation and you're trying to get people to conserve. So that's just a community decision as to what is most appropriate for that water system. So we had, as part of that process, looked at water use because the water rate calculations or the necessary water rate is really based on the money that you need to make ends meet and how much water is being used that it's, you can spread out that cost over. And when we looked at it, there was a clear distinction between what I termed at the time kind of a wet year and a dry year in terms of the water that was produced at the treatment plant and ultimately metered through people's, by customers. And so I still, that information is still there and can be used at this point in talking to Tony, the current water use from last year. Fell more in line with what we were terming, calling a wet year, which was lower water use. People aren't doing as much outdoor water use versus in a dry year, you tend to see a spike in water use. So there's kind of a range of rates that you would end up coming up with if you were trying to make ends meet and then trying to say, well, what are we talking about, a wet year or a dry year? So Phil had asked me, and I'm not sure if you've seen this already, had asked me to look at what a certain percent increase from the current water rate would generate in terms of additional water revenue, just to get a sense of what kind of impact it might have. So I have that with me. Thank you. So based on the, this is maintaining the existing rate structure, so the current minimum charge would be maintained, and this is just an assumption for, to illustrate the kind of impact you could or would see. And it would maintain the distinction between the non-agricultural and agricultural, recognizing the nature of the community. I set it up with two existing, or two columns, one based on a wet summer and a dry summer. And you'll notice, for the wet summer, this is going back to when we did the study before, it was based on, I believe, 2009 was when we looked back at the water consumption trends and precipitation data. 2009, actually, it was two, yeah, 2009 was the wet summer and 2010 was more of a dry summer. And you can see there's a pretty significant difference. That's 79 million gallons over the year of actual metered consumption. What the plant and the pump stations produce is more because there's always some unaccounted for water that's used for, or actually accounted for water that's used for flushing, firefighting. The difference between the wet and the dry summer is 13 million gallons. So using the current rates, we would project, and this is based on actual meter records from those years, 2009, 2010. We were estimating just over 380,000 in revenues if it were a wet year. I believe the information that was just provided illustrates for water and sewer revenues over the past, you know, 2010 to 2013. For 2013, the water revenues were just under 400,000. So it was probably somewhere just, you know, over a wet year, but it's in line with kind of that range we defined because if you look at the dry summer where there's more water use, you would anticipate almost 440,000 in revenue. So I feel confident that the rates that we were using or the meter records that we're using are appropriate for projecting what you might see in terms of revenues based on water rate changes. So with that said, we tested, what if you do a 5% increase in the rates, in the water rates? And this would, again, not change the minimum charge, but just the actual rate itself. We would anticipate that you would see, if it were on the low end or a wet summer, just over 13,000 in additional revenues for that year. If it were a dry summer and people were using more water, you might see as much as 16,000 in additional revenues. Note that as a percent increase, it isn't quite the 5% increase because a fair amount of the water consumption falls under that minimum allowance. So if we're locking that at its current rate, that's going to kind of temper the rate increase or the revenue increase. So that's why you see the difference, you know, we raised the rates 5%, but you're not going to see a 5% increase in revenue. You could do that by raising the minimum allowance or the minimum charge, a similar percentage. That's a decision that the board will need to make. And then proportionately, those revenue projections go up if you go to, say, a 10% increase. They essentially double so that the range of actual revenue changes would be just about 27,000 if it were a wet summer, up to just over 32,000 if it were a dry summer. So that's what we had looked at very quickly for the water revenue projections. I don't know if the board has any questions, thoughts, further guidance?
Yeah, I've got, I've got one, a couple of questions here.
Yes.
One is the way we're doing business, some of this, all of it reflects on how we're doing business and are we doing it 100% up the snuff? Okay, that would be my first question. The second one is, if we eliminated the discount rate, I know some agricultural stuff gets discounted rate, if we discount that, how much money are we talking and where does that put us in, into perspective as far as the dollar figure? Because maybe what we should be looking at is a one rate right across the board, period. Doesn't matter who uses what water, everybody pays the same rate.
Okay. I don't have that answer, but I certainly, I'll get back to you on that.
Well, let's break out to your first question. Your labor costs have virtually remained constant save for contractual colas.
Correct.
Electricity is not controlled price. Fuel's not controlled price. So some of these other costs are, they are what they are and we pay. But there's been no, on the cost side, there's really been no spike in any particular area. It's relatively flat.
Yes. We try and keep it the same, you know, stay within budget.
So it gets then to, is our model and the figure we're using for the, kind of the mode of, between the wet year and the dry year appropriate to cover the operating expenses? And it really needs to build in some amount just to cover a cola and increases in fuel charges, that type of thing.
Unforeseen expenses.
And then the second part, what is, is our number right? Is the 5% better, a better figure than what we've been using? And the other piece of this, is there some reasonable, and there needs to be, well, I should, but I should put it that way, there needs to be some bite toward our capital expenses that have never been factored into our rate structure. All we cared about originally setting this up was cover down operating expenses. And what's a reasonable bite? Now, I know you've done some work on the water side and projected the 10-year, I think we're into the second year or that or so. So you have a pretty good feel as to your out-year capital requirements, at least on the water side. So what, is there some reasonable bite that we could, some percentage allocation that we could add on to covering down the operating cost that also covers some, build up some retained earnings to help defer the capital requirements? I mean, I see that as a task. I see that as a task, but I guess what we're looking to do is help with what those numbers might be. The Finance Committee, for example, this is the second year, and they rightfully, rightfully so, keep raising the issue, you know, not everyone is on sewer and yet we have to turn to taxation. You need at least, talking about the 2.5% every year, and we haven't raised some of these rates in some years, just to cover down cost of living. But again, even just the 2.5% is not going to cover down a bite toward your capital requirements.
I mean, there are a few things that, Tony, I mean, on the heating side, we spent how many thousands of dollars up there to just do some recovery on the heating side that we saved X amount of dollars on a year. So, I mean, there are little things that we can do that also need to be taken into consideration. As far as capital expenses, and Jeff, you're right on one respect, but on the other respect, when you start raising the rates here and it affects everybody, every homeowner. When we converted from the regular budget to the enterprise fund, we took a heck of a cut in the budget, which left a hole, so to speak, and we shoved all the money to the enterprise fund or we separated it. And now what the people are going to be getting is not only they got a high tax bill, but now they're going to be getting another increase in their water bill. So, and that money is gone, okay, because we filled that void with other items. So now they're not only getting taxed more on their taxes, they're getting zapped on the water too. So looking at the whole picture, I think we got more problems here than, we really need to take a look at the whole picture before we start adding more and more and more and people aren't even going to be able to afford the water.
Well, of course, every time you raise your rates, your usage will go down. People will conserve. That's penalty of conservation.
But we're raising the rates where before it all came underneath taxation and now it's all separate.
Well, that brings up a point of strategy. You could go back to the original strategy of covering your operating expenses and your fee structure and covering your capital expenses by taxation like you did before.
You could do that.
And frankly, I don't, I think if we tried to cover our capital expenses, we have an old system, there's millions on the water side that we were aware of, I don't even know what the sewer side is. I mean, it would drive our rates up astronomically.
Right, exactly.
And I think that when we looked at this.
So as a point of strategy, you could just focus on adjusting rates to take care of your operating expenses, at least cover those, and then dealing with capital expenses as capital items going to town meeting and.
Either way, they're paying.
Either way, they're paying.
Right. Another question I have is, how many, I know I talked to Tony about, I mean, is everybody honest about the water they use? Is it going through a meter or are there other lines that are running off the side? I think we should be looking at that before we start.
Well, that's on the margin.
Yeah. When the meters were put in years ago, you know, prior, people had water lines going everywhere in their yard.
Right, yeah.
Because it was just a flat rate. So it was acceptable. Well, when we started switching on meters, it, they did their best in installing them in houses and talking with residents and trying to be honest and make sure that everything was metered, which of course, over the six years that I've been here so far, we have found quite a few of them so far and they've been eliminated or an additional meter was put in to cover it.
Right.
Yeah, we do run into them here and there, but most people are very, very honest about it.
Oh, yeah.
Some people honestly don't even know. They bought the house recently, don't know the history and all of a sudden they go out to the barn out back and, hey, I got a lake in here, we don't know what this is all about. I mean, we had it right here next door with the lady next to the town hall here, never even knew that it was happening.
I mean, is there a way that we can look at some of this? I mean, and again, you're right, it isn't, you know, I'm not faulting anybody because they probably don't know what's happening anyway.
Yeah.
But the thing is.
Big picture, Tony, what, there's a, there's some kind of statistics or a number that the state has, Tony, report. It's the unaccounted for water. So you keep track of what water you're sending out of the, one of your pump stations and the treatment plant. And then you know what water's getting metered, you just add it all up. There's a difference there. You account for everything you can reasonably account for through flushing, fire protection, things like that, known leakage. Then there's another unknown that's called unaccounted for water. What have your numbers historically been in the past few years?
Anywhere from 16 to 20% unaccounted for water.
That's a lot of water.
This past year, we produced 103 million gallons. Through meter billing, we were able to account for 83 million. As for the rest of that, where that 20 million went, the way the state makes me report it is not very nice. So I can only truly tell them about 5 million that I can account for, the way the formulas work, in reality, should be 10. So somewhere along the line, we're missing 10 million gallons.
This is taken into consideration fire protection?
Yes.
And we know basically roughly when there's a fire?
Those are the easy ones to calculate. It's, some of them, you can't count, account for because it's considered leak detection that, you know, a fire hydrant's been leaking underground for six months, well, they won't give you credit for that on the report. So it's.
How about like the break that just happened that we lost 800,000 gallons or whatever it was?
That I can account for because it's documented, what time we noticed it at, how long it was running for, you know, the size it applied, pressures. It's an interesting formula to account for it, but we can. So in reality, this year, we're missing about 10 million gallons. I mean, we've got a system that's 110, 115 years old, you know, there's lines in the ground that we don't know about. Some areas of town, it could be leaking underground and you'd never even see it because the soil's so good for drainage. We're constantly leak detecting. Monday, we're starting again with mass rural water, just a couple of suspect areas that we really want to pay close attention to and make sure we have no problems. But that's an ongoing thing every year.
But to get back then to Jan's point, you are, as you go along.
Slowly eliminating.
Eliminating the un-metered as you find them and as people discover them. And you're going out on a proactive basis looking for leaks in.
Correct.
In suspected areas.
Is there any kind of detection system that you can find if you got two lines going to somebody's house?
No.
Okay.
Unfortunately, and especially with the age of some of our pipes, the materials they are, a lot of people have plastic pipe in the ground. It's, and it's not even rated for water. It was originally designed for swimming pool use, lawn irrigation systems. It's really, really thin walled pipe. That was common because this system never really had much pressure years ago and now it does. So we're seeing that. There's no way possible to locate where lines go when they're of plastic, asbestos cement pipes, those natures.
You got to remember, back in the 80s, when we put that new water tower, water tank up in a mountain, we increased, I think the pressure in this town was 32 pounds of pressure in the line and it went up to 74 pounds. And I remember that because I worked on that project. And we blew lines throughout the whole town constantly until we got it under control. So as far as the system can use up to 74 pounds that I know of, it's been tested here because that's what it was in the beginning. I don't know what it is now, but.
The water pressure stays constant, anywhere between 60 and 64, like the highest pressure.
It's dropped some.
The highest pressure you'd see would be here.
Yeah.
I don't know how you come up with a number of 74 because.
That's what they gave us back. If you look back at records in the, in the 80s, I think it was 84 roughly, that's when Brockway Smith came in, that's when, when they put that tank in.
I can't fill, it's impossible to fill a tank any higher because for every 2.31 liter you call it, it's from BSI.
I don't know.
So it's, I can't, it's impossible for me to increase the pressure any more than it is.
Sure. But I remember, that's what they told us back then.
Based on that number though, if your unaccounted for water is between 15 and 20% consistently, the kind of state target is 10 or under, 10% or under. And then you get to a certain point where you're just, you're going to spend more effort than it's worth. Tells me there's some room to find some more, so it's just a process of continuing to do what Tony's doing. One of the likely suspects for a lot of systems would be the meters themselves, but that's not going to be the case.
Well, he's upgrading, upgrading the meters.
Yeah.
Each year, well, not all, but each year he's been doing a couple hundred.
Yeah, we're doing the outside readers so we can read much faster. We can, that way eventual goal is possibly quarterly billing. That way we can have a better handle on consumption data so we have more real time as to what we can account for and what we're missing. Because in the winter months, who wants to walk up to every house? It's not very pleasant. We do replace quite a few of the older meters every year, probably somewhere in the average of 50 of them a year. But that's, that's when we have problems with them or we're noticing something just doesn't look right. But as Mike was saying, when I go through the billing at the end of the read cycle, I see a lot of houses that have very, very minimal use. Yes, it may be one resident live in there. Some are, we'll call them snowbirds that are, you know, they're not here the entire billing cycle through the winter. So we do have a lot of just minimal use bills that go out. And it's interesting to see, you know, once in a while I'll pick one up and realize that's a house of four or five people, something's wrong, the meter stopped or whatever. You know, that's where we get into an estimated bill for them. But when we do an estimated bill, it doesn't fall under our consumption data. It's just considered a zero with the billing. So the unaccounted for water in reality is a little less. But we are trying, we don't have very many meters every year that have problems or failures.
There's really nothing that else you can.
There's really nothing that else you can do except the leak detection, which we do yearly.
Correct.
And if something pops up where there's a leak in somebody's house, we correct it and we replace the meter and find that line that's been running for who knows how long into a barn. So I mean, as far as that goes, you can't go around and determine who has what. And I think one of the biggest problems here is the minimum use billing. I mean, because there's quite a few, there's quite a few. I mean, so maybe instead of adjusting a rate structure, maybe adjust the minimum use structure.
One thing I wanted to mention on leak detection, what happens here is typical of most water systems. You know, kind of an annual, bring in somebody from outside, do a very focused leak detection, you know, that might be over a week or two. Knowing full well that there's only so much you can cover. And in the time period in between, there's probably things happening that you're just not gonna see because you just can't be looking constantly. There is newer technology, equipment, that is really set up to be used directly by water suppliers. And essentially, it's equipment that you set up on, say, a section but on a couple of existing hydrants on a particular stretch of water main. And you would typically set it up and leave it there for a period of days. And what you're trying to see is what a normal water use pattern is. And if it's, say, a residential area, you should see that water use go to zero essentially, or near zero overnight. If you start seeing something, this equipment actually does it. When you look at it, pull it into a computer, it can pinpoint relatively accurately where it senses flow, like a week. And it could be, say, a service that is underground, nobody knows about, but it's leaking constantly. I'm confident that's something Tony could make good use of, but it's an initial outlay of money to get the equipment and then it's something you just move around and you shift to a mode of constant leak detection. Would I have to get back to you on that?
We're actually very fortunate on that end because Mass Rural Water has that. We're members with them and it's free for us to use. I mean, don't, don't forget, they, they cover in Berkshire County and all over Western Mass. So the availability of this equipment is shared amongst many, many communities, but we have started using that. The other downfall to it is, is you try and locate a small section by listening on valves overnight or for a period of nights. Well, in some sections of town here, it could be a mile section that you're trying to listen on. And the further distance you get away from everything, the less you can actually determine. So we're, we're trying our best in that department.
If we're losing roughly ten million gallons a year on this water, that comes to the equivalent of what, about forty thousand dollars roughly?
No. Ten million times point zero zero three.
I don't have to calculate that.
Mike's got it in his head.
Reason I ask that is, is it worth to buy a piece of equipment that's cost a hundred thousand dollars when there's no payback?
It's not a hundred thousand, but I'm trying to, the last quote I think is probably like ten.
Ten five, something like that.
But something to, you know, right, what's the return?
That's what I'm looking at here.
Well, we don't have to.
Just roughly.
Does that look correct to you? Thirty thousand, yeah, thirty thousand.
All right, so we're losing roughly thirty thousand on a, on a ten million gallon.
Yeah, if you were, well, not necessarily. Because say it was all, say it was all leaking and it isn't getting used. If you find a leak and stop it, it's not money that you're going to be able to, it won't turn into revenue. It will just decrease what, how much water is leaking coming out of the plant.
Right, so it's not like you're taking away the revenue.
Let me, let me back up. Are we comfortable with the assumptions regarding wet years and, and dry years? That, in a couple of years that have passed since we originally did those, are still?
We've, we've actually had a very good variety of wet and dry years lately and the information's stayed pretty consistent.
Okay.
And it's staying within, the actual revenues are staying, and water use are staying within that range that we defined previously. So in terms of projecting something going forward, I think there's a consistent history now?
Because I mean, if you look at what the revenues we collected on the water side in eleven, I mean, you collected four twenty-five, so you know that was one of the dry years.
Right.
You know, because the other two were three sixty, right around there. So that was probably an average year.
Right.
Do you have any more questions for these?
No, I think you've covered just a lot of everything. But I, I guess my last comment is that we really want to go back to the drawing board before we start raising rates and find out how, and everything is operating to the maximum and look at everything that we're depreciating from this and see if we can bring that up, like Phil says, even, even the, the minimum, the minimum rate. We still have our, our costs involved and they're fixed costs. So even if you have a fixed rate or a minimum rate, it still should include part of the fixed cost also. And then you, then you add what's going on. It's one thing to add for usage because there's very little or no usage, but we should be entering in as far as the expenses.
With the minimal use bill, because right now if it's water and sewer, it's ninety dollars. It's forty-five per each. What we may see is with some of these houses, we may actually see the homeowners say that, that's it, shut the water off because I'm not here, I'm not using it, you know, that way. And now, and now we've just lost ninety dollars right there.
But they also pay a fee to shut the water off, turn the water back on.
Yes, there, there's supposed to be a fee. Generally, we do not charge it because of the paperwork involved for a twenty, a twenty dollar charge to do it, a warrant and everything else to.
How much more than twenty dollars?
No.
It should be at least recouped in your.
I believe, I believe in our water regulations.
Make the water play, go to the house, do your job, use, use of the truck, use of the vehicle, expenses, you're looking at about a fifty dollar bill, I guess.
Well, you'd have to look at the water regulations. I don't remember offhand what exactly it was.
Maybe the way to look at it though is to not have a minimum use charge. Maybe recreate something else instead of that language.
Water.
Because I mean, you're giving, you're providing a service.
That's right.
For it, instead of a minimum use charge.
Yeah, some water systems charge, it's a service charge.
Right.
And it's just whether you use anything.
Right.
It's.
Have the capability there.
Yeah.
Right.
Right. And as you had brought up the agricultural rates, at this point, we only have eighteen customers that are on the agricultural rate.
But what I'm saying is eighteen or ten or five, it's still subsidized by everybody else and that, I know a lot of the other towns are going to a one rate right across the board. And I think that's what we should be looking at also.
Well.
It's just.
Go ahead.
I'm not, I'm not in favor of, oops. Plenty of.
Can you hang up on the line?
I'm, I'm not in favor of an across-the-board rate because, I mean, you know, granted, we're subsidizing the farmer, but if we start raising their rates, you know what's gonna happen? They're either gonna go to an artesian well, which will knock us out completely. So I sooner leave their rates where it is. They're happy, okay, you know? That's how I'm looking at it. Because nothing says that you can't put in an artesian well, you know?
We're, we're seeing that a lot around town with customers that are on sewer systems so that they can supply their lawn irrigation system. They're, it's covering their costs. I had asked one resident, you know, how much it costs and he says, within three years, it's paid for itself. And that's free water, so.
Well, yeah.
I think in a point.
And actually.
Just because of, they were having to pay sewer fees on top of the water use and they just decided it was time to break away from that and do it with just a well.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think there was at least one person that I know of, or thinking, has two, two meters, one for their pool, just to fill their pool or whatever, and another one to run their house.
Shouldn't be that one.
Not that I know of.
Oh.
It's been requested, but.
The, the way the water regulations are written was you can have a second meter only for the purposes of watering livestock, horses, cows. And it was written that way because if we had said just for outside use, we would have people with water meters in there, running their lawn irrigation system or, and then we also didn't even include agricultural because everybody's gonna say, well, it's agricultural, I'm using it, it's my garden. So it was listed for livestock purposes only. And at this current time, there's only two of them. One on King Street and one on Elm Street. And they get a minimal bill on those anyways because they're just not using that much water for a few horses.
We'll wrap this up, I know you, Mike, you have to leave here, but any thoughts about a tiered structure?
In, in looking at the water billing and the consumption, I can sort it from lowest to highest. There's just a handful of high users.
Yes.
Obviously CNS North, CNS South. Even though CNS South is a very small operation nowadays, they've had underground leaks that are metered. We've gone in because their bill was just as high as the North facility and they had nine toilets running constantly. That, you know, it, it made a big difference. So Verizon's another big customer, but other than that, we really don't have, we're more in a residential, normal use category.
So it wouldn't make.
I don't see a tiered structure.
Okay.
If, if anything, it would just deter businesses in the future.
Okay. Well, appreciate you coming. Our aim today was not to resolve everything, but to kind of queue up a way ahead. And I think a couple of things came out of the discussion. One, DPW's got the charge to continue to do many of the things you're doing that Ed's raised and, and Jan regarding, taking a look at your operation, ferreting out where those leaks are and addressing the meter situation over time. I think for the board, there remains a whole bunch of things that we'd be looking again to your input on. And what should our strategy be? Should we simply recognize that the fee structure would be unsupportable? If we included the capital costs and deal with setting up a fee structure that covers down operating costs and defer the capital requirements to taxation as we have in the past? That would keep the, the rates down markedly in comparison. And then on us to look at the rate structure itself. What do we do about the minimum charge, if anything? Do we change that since you're required, no matter what, whether they use any to have the capability available to the resident to, to have access to water? And then do we look at changing the agricultural rate or not? Jan's had suggested we look at it. Jan's already indicated he's not particularly in favor. And you've mentioned there's only eighteen folks. That's not gonna make a, a big difference.
Jeff, can.
And then the final thing is, I'll get right back to you. As, as an assumption in all this, we're, we're pretty comfortable about our projections, wet year versus dry year? And then what number we ought to be using to kind of base all this on? So we, we've, the board's got some homework to do here. I'm sorry.
A little bit on the line of what you're just saying. Scenarios would mean a lot to us, okay? If you could come up with scenarios, if we, if we discontinue this or we raise the, the minimum requirement, what's the repercussion? How much is this gonna bring in revenue? And give us make figures, give us some scenarios, okay? And give us a scenario on the whole thing. If we, if we took and we restructured the, the minimum usage and the, and the adjusted rates and, and everything else, where would we be if we took and went across the board? So if you have five or six different scenarios, that would make it easier so we can see exactly what's going on and where we need to touch and, and compromise here.
The, the other, that's excellent. Cheers. The other, the other item, if, in our planning assumptions, we're, we're okay with the usage, the way, the wet year, dry year issue. You know, one other thing that needs to be factored in there is simply the cost of living factor, fuel, electricity, those kinds of things. So there's a, there's a small percentage there that. And, and then the other thing, the frequency of our look at, at rates. I mean, some of these rates have not been changed for some years.
And it reflects, that reflects on the sewer side that the rates haven't been changed since, you know, since eleven, ten into eleven, as where we adjusted the water rates into twelve into thirteen and it recouped that money to provide for the operating costs where it didn't on the sewer side. I mean, that sewer side of this budget is running deficit every year just to operate it. And it's due to the fact that there's only seven hundred users. I mean, it's very low numbers.
You guys on the industry just flushing more.
Well, don't forget, Phil, that's why we talked about expanding the systems and looking at the whole town and seeing what was practical on, on expansions, okay? Just to get more people on the sewer. What's it gonna cost us? What, we, we need cost analysis to, to determine whether we, whether it's feasible or not. Okay, whether we keep it the way it is or, or we go with a sewer line down a specific street because it's gonna generate so much revenue. I mean, these are the kind of things that we need to make our job easier in determining what we're gonna do here.
You know, and that's one of the.
We had that in the, the capital plan, capital planning group recommended that study about sewer system, expanding a sewer system. You recall in our earlier balancing discussions, we pulled that off the table, that study. It was something roughly fifty thousand dollars, I recall. And simply as to balance the books for the year, we, we pulled that study off the table. Clearly, it's needed at some point soon. Not just for rate structure, but where do we want development in the town, if any? Because that'll drive.
There may be grant money for that.
Yes.
On the DHCD or something, housing.
Well, Mass Works probably.
Mass Works, yeah.
All right. Well, we need to circle back to this soon. If, Ed had an excellent point about, instead of us trying to struggle through, if you could come up with some scenarios, all capital costs going to taxation, so, versus a mix.
That's really straightforward.
Those kinds of things.
Fortunately.
You're, you're factoring in your operating costs, your COLA, that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
On another note, are we pretty much done on that?
Okay.
I just wanna bring up Mass Works or the grant that we apply for. Every year, this year, we, we didn't get it again and we had the, I felt we had a hundred percent perfect application, didn't happen. When is the next?
August.
Around August that we have to get these in by? Are we going moving forward?
Yes. We've already covered that.
Okay.
In fact, we're going with two. Not only the, some of the five stuff, but we're gonna go with another one for the going, the.
Hundred ninety-one.
To pick up the, the funding for the. To pick up the, the funding for the cost of going under Route 91.
Okay.
And that would, and, and we'll argue it for actually going through that area where it's wet and wetlands and coming up to, from, from Brockway on to Chestnut Street, Plain Road, Gore Avenue, that area.
I, I had heard yesterday that there was a large company that would like to build a pretty big structure somewhere along Route 5 corridor, okay? But it's got to be shovel ready and, and we're not there. And this is a whole nother thing. If we can get a, a letter from them, that might be added to reinforce our, our chances of getting the grant.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the one thing, and this is what we don't know at this point, last year, the Mass Works program had a housing focus to it. So it just didn't fit very well with what was being proposed in terms of how this compared to other projects that were being evaluated.
But when you looked at some of the awards and made your wince.
Yes.
Parking lot in East Hampton? I'm sorry.
The criteria, we, we matched the criteria almost perfectly. And then they go and they change the, I mean, I believe that they don't even know what the heck they're doing in Boston.
I can tell we're done with this.
Mind the federal government, okay? Sorry, but, you know, when they, when they come up with guidelines and we follow them to almost the T, and then our application isn't there, and then we see what they spend the money on, it's like, wait a minute, what's going on here? It's not like we're, we're not trying, we're trying very hard to make this happen. This is going on, what, the third year now? I believe it is.
Maybe the fourth.
Maybe even fourth.
Fourth.
Okay. So, okay.
Thank you. Now, do we want to talk about the, what, the break?
The break, and then I have another item on the transmission main project also.
Okay, okay, great.
Okay.
Talk about the break for a minute?
On Sunday morning, when I went to work to check the plant, which we all know it's a seven day a week job. Noticed a large amount of water being consumed or missing.
Sure.
And subsequently, we started looking all around town for water breaks. We had also just had two inches of rain, so all the rivers were swallowed up, and we have a lot of, we have a large number of water mains in the rivers. So it was impossible to tell if there was a leak there. After looking and we finally found it on Route 5, just before the 91 crossing, in between the southbound onramps. And we were very fortunate that we were able to shut it off and not affect any customers at the time. So all our water levels came back, everything's in good shape. But at this point, we have one fire hydrant that's out of service. It's created a dead end for water. So the one last customer that's on that loop is getting older water. It's not a problem, but it's just, you know, it's a little bit older in age than normally would be. That one fire hydrant that's out of service is directly across from Kenwood Terrace, which that's kind of important to have that there for fire protection. There is another one very close by at the intersection of pantry road. So, but with having that water main isolated, you're not getting water from the north and the south. So water flows in that area are greatly diminished from what they would normally be for firefighting purposes. The other problem we have with it is it's a six inch pipe. And from our best estimate, it's put in the ground in 1896, probably relocated when they did 91, but it, maybe not, we're not sure at this point. But it's on top of a bridge for the Mill River Crossing. It's located out in Mass Highway's layout. So Mass Highway has certain requirements for working in their area. And this main has broken there in the past on the north, north end of where this current one is. We're suspecting due to the frost and movement of the earth, you know, there's just barely any cover on it as it is. Whether the bridge moved a little bit or whether the frost moved the mains a little bit, we really don't know. It may have frozen broke on its own. This year was an incredible year for frost that we normally don't see as deep as it was. So I've asked Mike and his company to take a look at it, come up with some rough numbers because I feel as though Mass Highway's gonna have some stipulations with us. It's not going to be cheap, what their requirements are going to be. We have wetland issues surrounding the whole area. And we really don't know. The, the Route 91 bridge crossing itself is relatively new. That was put in in the 1991, 92 era, somewhere around there. The plans say 91 on them, so I'd say 1992 it was probably installed. So that's relatively new. My theory on it would, in talking to Phil, was that we should probably start at the bridge that's brand new or relatively new and run south along Route 5 and replace it all the way up to in front of Kenwood Terrace. Just that way, we're out of the wetlands issues and we don't have to worry about going back in that area again with the permitting, the engineering, and dealing with the state. Another option is to replace just the 160 foot section on that Mill River Bridge. And what kind of pipe do we put there? Do we put larger pipe there because of our future design is calling for a 12 inch water main out there? You know, do we put in a 12 inch right there at this time? It's possible. We actually have the pipe in stock, so that's not an expense. Would have an expense of contractors doing the work, insulating the pipe to make sure that it doesn't freeze and have problems. And the permitting and such natures. Or do we just go out there, dig it up quick and put a Band-Aid on it that may last a year, may last 10 years? We don't know. It's, I don't know if Mike had any rough numbers for us.
Yeah, I guess just order of magnitude, if you're talking about replacing just the 160 feet, the area that goes over this bridge or culvert with very probably limited cover. Even though it's a short length of pipe, the per foot cost is probably going to be high when you look at it in terms of bidding because you're really paying for somebody to come out, be there with a full crew for five days, a little more, whatever, on top of just some of the state highway issues. So you're probably talking somewhere between, you know, could be as low as 25,000, 20, 25,000, but it could be twice that, up to 50, if, if you're just talking about doing a very limited stretch. Advantage to having, to say, starting at the new bridge, the I-91 bridge and continuing south, end up with a lot, much greater length of pipe, so the whole project cost is higher. But you're, you're getting more, you'll get more for your money in the long run, rather than getting somebody to come out to do a very limiting scope of work. But the reality is too, it costs more money that you may not have.
Also, Mike, you have to take into consideration, if we did get the grant that we were talking about to come up Route 5, that would take care of some of it, so.
That was part of the, that whole plan.
That's exactly.
So I remember looking at this area before, and then on the east side of the road, there's a short, the, the bridge actually extends beyond the pavement and beyond the guardrail, maybe 10 feet. There's a gas main over there. Ideally, we could get the water main behind the guardrail. I'm not sure that that's possible because there's a gas main back there, it's, it slopes right down, something we'd have to look at.
Don't forget, you're also losing your coverage there too. Okay? Because when I was out there yesterday with Tony, took a look at it, that slopes right down to the bridge abutment, and you've only got about three feet down to the bridge abutment.
Right.
And you probably got four feet to the bottom of the pipe that's running up over, over the bridge.
Right.
So you're, you're in that frost, that pipe is probably down to the top of the pipe, maybe three foot six, something like that.
Whatever goes in there, whether we're in the road or off the shoulders, would still need to be fully insulated, which is what we were talking about, say, on Chestnut Street and that crossing.
What's the swag on this?
In terms of just the backbone?
This, this option, this option.
If you're just looking at doing the, within the water main or.
Through the 160 feet, we're talking?
160 feet, the difference between being in the road and off the road?
We had 25 to 50,000 for that.
Yeah, staying off the road keeps it down closer to the 25. Once you get into the pavement, then you're dealing with the, having to backfill with flowable fill, you're having to do all the pavement repairs, which is substantial. We're talking probably seven inches of pavement out there. And infrared sealing, once we start cutting into their road. It's about, it, it pretty much doubles the price.
Can you insulate it enough to protect it in a three foot, three foot box?
The pipe we're putting across the Mill River at Chestnut Street, that crossing, will be fully exposed on a utility bridge. So it would be the same extent of insulation.
We have the Route 91 crossing, bridge, street crossing, Maple Street crossing.
We don't have any problems with those.
I, I'd rather have it even if we had to mound it up a little or almost have it exposed. If I can get it off the paved road, that'd be much better.
What's, I mean, you're still gonna, how deep would you be with it?
As deep as I can get.
It, we, we would be, the bottom of the pipe would be on top of the bridge abutment itself or the bridge covering. And on top of the pipe would be hard pressed to have a foot of cover. There's just.
Maybe two at the maximum, if you put up one foot in.
We wouldn't know until we did some design work and actually, you know, looking at it. As for what Mass Highway's requirements are going to be about it, are they going to let us be right on top of that culvert?
Well, the other thing I was going to mention is that this falls underneath the emergency fix, okay? Because of fire protection, because of the whole, the whole process here. So a lot of things are waived because of that, and as you know.
I don't think Mass Highway waives anything.
Well, if we need to get extra help in here to, to get the fix done, we need it, okay? We're not going to jeopardize somebody's property and, and, you know, when, when other people have gotten quick, quick turnarounds and, and quick.
Well, how long it's going to take to frame up some proposals for us, specific proposals?
I think within the next week.
Okay.
We'll know more.
All right, well, can we wait till the 22nd?
Yeah.
If we need to act quicker, we can have a special meeting.
Well, I think. In the meantime, I think someone should be filing something with Mass DOT. You know, regardless, it has to be.
Underneath the emergency clause.
We might as well file the permitting through them now.
We need to get in there and fix it.
What are, what are we looking at as far as fire protection over there?
It's only a six inch water main, so even on a, on a normal day, it's very limited.
Oh, but I, you know, I'm saying now we're, it's fed, the north end of town is being fed off of.
Right now, we've got water, it's a loose system normally, but right now, like Davio Mastas house, Hatfield Feed and Seed, that area is all being fed from off of North Hatfield Road.
Yep.
And Depot Road. Up to Kenwood Terrace is being fed all the way from Lindsay Road, or actually Brockway Smith, to the north. And that's just one direction. So. I mean, normally it's coming both directions, whichever way it needs to, you know? And, you know, fire situation, water would be coming from both ways. But right now, it's limited.
Okay, my next question is money, okay? Where are we going to get the money to repair this? Okay? And that's, there's a couple of options here, and, and one of them, I'm not sure, I think you said you had about $20,000 in your budget, just enough to take you through the end of the year. I'm not sure how much we'll have left over from different accounts. That's another option. And then the third option is to put an article on town meeting floor, on, on our town meeting warrant, to take it from stabilization to fix this repair, because there's money there. And also possibly in the enterprise, I'm not sure how much money we have in that reserve fund. Well, there's, there's options out there. I don't know what's gonna, what's gonna work, but we certainly got to talk about it.
Well, I know, but we need to know what the options are and pick an option, then we'll, then we'll deal with the funding right at the same time. And they said they'll be ready for the 22nd, we'll lock it down then, because on that date, we need to sign the warrant.
Yep.
Now, do you want to go into the water main project?
Okay, so we're going to hear more from you on the 22nd, we'll finalize it, okay?
But in the meantime, we're going to file the permitting through Mass DOT.
Right.
Yeah, I'll coordinate with them because it may be just a simple matter of just notifying. And that kind of project is just their standard conditions, really.
Right, yeah. Well, I just want to, we don't want to get held up with that.
We'll know this week.
Yes, Phil.
I'm sorry, you had another topic, Mike?
Yes, on the transmission main project.
Yes.
Over the past month, there's been the long awaited spring thaw. But it's created a mess on the construction site. And the, the issue, the access road or access to the plant typically is, you know, that first stretch of Rocks Road from Lindsay to Reservoir and then up Reservoir Road. Contractor last fall installed the new water main down Reservoir Road to the intersection of Reservoir and Rocks. Did a short stub of going west on Rocks, just about to where the, there's a culvert before you hit Lindsay. Stopped short of that, and then they did the preemptive or pre-blasting of ledge down the entirety of Rocks Road. With the, during the winter, that road was passable. It was frozen. With the thaw, it's essentially become impassable, the material, especially right at the, kind of that stretch of Rocks Road, you know, between Lindsay and Reservoir, starts to get more into like a clay material. So as soon as it got excavated, got rekind of worked just from the construction traffic on it, it's very loose, you can't even get a pickup through there. So we're facing an issue right now where Tony is going to be needing propane delivery. Over the winter, we was able to deal with it because it could get through. We don't have the time to let the clay material drain out, so we've been pushing the contractor to repair the road, get it back to a passable condition. And one of his limitations is getting replacement material up to the side. That means essentially bringing it up Lindsay Road. But the obstacle is there's a weight limit on Lindsay. And just order of magnitude, I think the weight limit, there's two different postings, depending which direction it comes.
28,000?
24,000.
Yeah, 24,000. So, but his trucks are up, just under 80,000.
I was gonna say 75,000.
A 10 wheel dump truck. So he has put forth a request for a temporary waiver, brief, kind of an emergency recognition of this is an emergency. If he could use that road to bring up material, we're figuring he's probably talking about 70 truckloads over the course of a week to get that road stabilized.
Okay, question bring off the bat is, the reason for that weight limit is the water main is over there?
The, the water mains are in the road, the whole length of it, except for a short section, but, and in some places, they're very shallow and it's nothing but clay soil.
Do, do we know where they're shallow? I'm, I'm just thinking of putting steel plating on, and that's it.
No.
You know?
Yeah.
I mean, if it's short enough, where we can do it.
We might as well start at the beginning of Lindsay Road and start putting steel plates the whole way.
No, I'm just saying where it's real shallow.
Is there another option here? There's a couple gravel banks up there. I know the town owns one, it wasn't very good gravel because it was awful bony, but it would be good for a base. Okay, right at the corner of Mountain Road and Lindsay Road. That would be a heck of a start is if we could get in. That would be a heck of a start, is we could get into that mountain there, and take that gravel and use that, and come down from the, from Mountain Road to Lindsay Road, right in that area there, there's no blacktop, so you'd be doing the short distance just to get the gravel in there for a base.
At this point in time, I won't even drive a pickup truck through there. It's, everything's impassable up there.
Up in that area?
Yeah. The only way you can access anything up there is on foot.
But you're gonna rip the road apart, you realize you're gonna rip the road apart? Okay, you put any heavy trucks like that with that much gravel on, stuff like that, you're gonna rip that road right apart. You may as well trash the road and do the whole thing over again.
Well, Lindsay Road was on the list for heaving this year.
Yeah, but it was a list to overlay, not reclaim.
I believe we were reclaiming that. We reclaimed the first section of it, because of the amount of heaving and everything else that we have in that road.
I think we went back and looked at it and said we should reclaim the whole road, so. But I think, I think instead of reclaiming it, you better look at maybe even putting a better base in there, because you got areas in there that are really problem areas.
If you do a full depth reclamation, I mean, you're gonna...
Yeah, it evens a lot of things out.
You're gonna get the good material.
Well, I'm just thinking of another option, if there was some way to get it in there, even get a bulldozer cart, or something like that with tracks, to get it from the gravel bank over, I'm not sure.
All right, I can't...
Let's leave it to DPW to sort out how to, but the issue on the table is, what's the risk to the water system if we have this 80,000 pound?
A very expensive fix. A very expensive fix. Basically, we break one of those water mains, everybody from, basically Lou's house, to the end of Lindsay Road would be without water for god only knows how long, until we could get out there to repair it. The rest of the town would have water, but at a very limited amount. Fire protection would be very minimal. That's why we're doing this transmission main, as we all know, is to avoid this issue. So, but as of right now, the contractor cannot work there. We have to walk in and out of the facility, which has become a real big inconvenience. I mean, every morning, you get to walk through the water and the mud, and...
Well, I just, I understand that, but I just think that some of the, not to blame, but some of the responsibilities on that contractor. He knew, he knew the conditions up there of that soil. We bored it, he dug there, he knew the conditions, where he should have stockpiled some material up there.
Right, you're right.
I mean, so for us to take the risk of damaging a water main, because he wants to haul that much gravel up there, shouldn't be on the town. It should not be on the town. He should have took precautions, he should have brought the material to the site.
Well, the question... There's plenty of staging up there.
Maybe we stipulate conditions on, just going forward, that if something happens...
Well, something has to be written in there.
Something happens and devastating over the whole town.
I mean, that's just poor pre-planning, knowing the conditions of what was coming up after the thaw, because he knew farewell was coming up after that thaw.
Well, I mean, the question on the table is a binary, either yes, we approve it, or no, we don't, or disapprove it.
I think if there's gonna be an approval, it has to have the conditions. I mean, if he damages something, it's on him.
Yeah, and he can decide whether he fully loads the trucks or not. He could say, "I'm just gonna do 50,000."
Come up with one tons.
We didn't talk about that.
That'd be until August.
But what's DPW's recommendation?
My recommendation is put it all on him.
Yeah, I mean, it basically allow him to do it.
If he wants to take that risk to bring the 80,000 pounds up there, that's on him if something happens. If he wants to load them halfway, which the smart contractor probably would, and make, instead of that many loads, double it.
Okay, and this needs, you're right, and this needs to be reduced to writing in contract amendment there?
I think we could, no?
We could draft something up very easily.
I think it has to be approved by the board. But it has to have board approval.
All right, well, is there a motion to approve, excuse, let me ask, Bob Wagner's here for...
Yeah, Bob Wagner, I'm not here for this, but I coincidentally live on Lindsay Road, so... I actually wanna echo a couple points. So I'm glad to know that you are aware of the deterioration of the road over the last year or two, and there's some pretty serious dips in there. And I'm not telling you, Phil, anything you don't already know, and your colleague here. I mean, we have at least one bridge, and a number of culverts, which I'm sure have something to do with that weight limit as well, because of the condition or the age of those bridges. The other thing I just would like to point out, if you're gonna be stipulating conditions for the contractor, is if they're gonna be bringing 70 trucks of this size over the course of, did you say a week, or a day?
It would take a week.
Okay. Then they have to be read the riot act, that they have to drive the speed limit. Because when they first start, when that project first started, and their guys were coming up Lindsay Road to get to the work site, by the time they got to the, through the S-turn, it's a straight shot, as you know, from there to Dennis Warren's and the dirt stretch of Lindsay Road, and they, they were not driving even 30. And, you know, there's a lot of, it's residential, you know, it's rural, it's outlined residential, but it is primarily a residential neighborhood, and so there's a lot of people on the road, and it's a curvy road, so there's a lot of runners, there's people walking their pets. So I would wanna make absolutely certain that they're driving at a very, very safe speed.
We certainly could put the crews up there.
All right, so is there a motion to approve waiver of the weight limit on Lindsay Road for the contractor with conditions?
Any damage done that, they have full responsibility.
Damages to the water.
Right.
And so by by the speed limit.
Mike can take care of it.
How about, one thing is the water main, but right now, the road, yes, it's uneven, yes, it's got some cracks in it, but...
That's a tough one.
When this truck goes over it, and you've got 80 trucks going over it, it's gonna, actually, there's gonna be potholes, there's gonna be all kinds of stuff that happens to that road. And the residents up there are not gonna be happy. I know... You could write a stipulation in the conditions where, during the course of bringing the material up there, if anything is created, that it's on them to fix. Whether they rip a section out 100 feet, or a two-foot pothole, it's up to them to, you know...
About the biggest area I see that will be a problem with the road deteriorating, is gonna be right in the Lindsay area where the Coronation Shack is, because that's where heaved and frost heaved the worst this year. So, we may have another one up around the corner where a culvert pipe is heaved, and it still, the frost hasn't even come close to coming out of the ground in a shade there.
And as you know...
That one may, I would ask that the contractor would actually just temporarily fill it with coal patch, just so that it's a smooth crossing, instead of trucks banging through it. Plus, it'd make residents on the street happy for a while.
Can we lay out the water lines up there, Tony? You know, mark them, so they can stay off of them, you know? If it means pushing them, you can't, no? Okay?
Nope.
All right, I mean...
No, it's, they're basically in the middle of the road.
They're in the middle of the road.
And a couple places where the old road was changed, they're off the road, but it's, for the most part, they're in the road.
Boy, oh boy.
Can I ask just, I know that you've done this in the past, Phil, when a road is gonna be paved, you do one of those robo-calls. If maybe when this, that week, that window is, that those of us on Lindsay Road get a robo-call, knowing to expect, to see, and maybe explain why? I don't think anybody, I mean, you're not, you're not driving up Mountain Road and coming through the Christmas tree farm to get around back. It is the only way to get in there, I mean, it's, it is what it is, but...
Yeah, we just wanna protect what we have existing, that's all.
Okay.
So one is, we're basically trying to get just access to the water treatment plant, that's all we're trying to do. Yeah, because right now, he has to take a four-wheeler.
Right, and if there were emergency power, you could not get...
Right now, I'm running out of propane, that means no emergency power, no heat in the building. We have sensitive equipment in there that does need heat to run. And it just, there's no way to get anything up there.
I mean, the bottom line is, if we had to, we could rent one of the big tanks, 500-gallon tanks. And I don't know if they can bring it over there by excavator or something, I'm not sure.
Yeah, but 500-gallon tank only lasts two weeks.
But in two weeks, it's gonna bring into May.
You're not gonna bring in a full tank.
Yeah, they're not gonna bring it in full.
No, that's true too, okay.
All right, there's a motion to approve waiver of the weight limit on Lindsay Road with the conditions specified regarding...
I'm having a real problem with that, Jeff, but I'll...
Yeah, if something breaks, it's up to them to repair it immediately.
That's my problem, if something breaks, we jeopardize the whole neighborhood, we jeopardize fire protection, if somebody's got a house on fire up there, what do you, you know, you're... There's a lot of things to look at here. One thing is to give a break on what's going on, but I'm looking at the whole picture here.
Yeah, one way or another, we're gonna jeopardize the whole operation.
Because if he runs out of fuel, the plant is down, the pump is down, all you're gonna depend on basically is two wells.
One well.
One well, now, yeah, right.
You can't run the second well, because it would create too much pressure to the system.
You know, I will, I'll make it a motion that we, again, that they repair every, any and everything that they destroy.
I'll second it, but for discussion.
That one, like I said, I'm further discussion.
Well, we did a decision.
I mean, he needs...
Either yes or no.
Are we gonna have more damage done by no heat up there?
I'm not so much worried on the heat end of things. That, you know, we can work around, weather temperature's starting to warm up anyways. It's more that, what if we have something come along where we have no power up there? That place is offline, no propane, no generator. So, we relied heavily on that back in the October storm, and quite a few since then.
It'd be lightning strike.
Yeah, I mean, we do, we do run on emergency power quite often up there.
Can't get up there with a skid skirt or something like that, with a trailer or something, you know, and...
Ed, if you would like, I have my personal ATV up there right now. I would be more than glad to take you for a ride, to see what the conditions are like. You would be amazed.
Horrendous.
And, I mean, if you were talking about...
I hear you, Tony, I'm looking at the town side, I'm looking at the resident's side, I'm looking at our obligation to protect the residents, I'm looking at the whole picture here. That's why I'm having a real hard time with this whole situation here, okay? Because no matter what we do here, it could come back to shoot us in the foot.
So, I joked about it before, but if the big issue is getting a propane tunnel, that couldn't come up Mountain Road and then around through your back door? Or is that, is that, is that road too...
The back road is just as bad as front, because we've never used that back road during the spring months, because we knew there was no base in it. This year, we had no option but to use it, and now it's just completely annihilated.
I haven't been back there since, because there's just been too much ice to walk around.
No, there is another option. You can build a corduroy road up there.
A what?
A corduroy road. If you get hold of, that's what they're doing on all the ride oys. They have the timber, you can have a logging truck come up there and just keep laying it on.
We're back in the overweight issue, we're bringing the mass...
Well, no, yeah, but I'm just saying, that is another issue. I mean, that's another option, you know?
Well, let the contractor bear the expense, they're the one that put us in this situation.
They are.
I mean, if they wanna look into that, that is available.
You know, maybe we should be putting this burden on them.
Restriction lifted, just to bring the mass in.
Oh, yeah, I mean, we can, I mean, to me, that is probably one of your better options.
The worst area is that stretch right...
Up to the gate.
Yeah, right at Reservoir, Rocks Road intersection, there's like 200 feet there, that's just...
It's fairly level.
It's fairly level, the waters just collect there, that's where they hit the clay material, so even though they didn't, you know, just, it gets worked from all the traffic, the construction vehicles going over it. They're gonna need to pull out two feet of material easy in that stretch, and replace it.
Are they planning on pulling that out to replace, I mean, once they pull it out, they gotta get rid of that somewhere too. So, you know, I mean, to me, that might be the option, is putting up temporary corduroy road until it, I mean, ask them.
Till it drains.
Till it drains off, and then you can get in there.
That'd be less risk on our part, okay, on the town's part. I like that idea, Jan.
I mean, the other factor at play here is where, I mean, there's the emergency issue with the, or access to the plant. There's also, we're trying to push the contractor to, he's gotta finish all this by August 16. And he has been essentially shut down for the winter, and we're like, you gotta get out there and get a couple crews going, because he's not gonna make it if he continues to work the way he has.
I thought he was gonna work right through the winter, coming down through...
Yes, so do we all.
But the only thing he did was blast.
Yeah, but the bottom line for that is, you have a contract, he has a contract with a firm completion date. There were no extenuating circumstances, yes, it was a colder winter, but it was not a winter of record.
I mean, from what I understand right now, and the last time I was up there was about three weeks ago, four weeks ago, ground was still frozen, but right now, the water's bubbling out of the ground in certain areas up there, causing a lot of erosion, a lot of problems. There's areas that that water needs to be redirected, okay, and that road's gotta be rebuilt. And he, I'm just afraid that it might be left just the way it is, and there's gotta be some engineering done before...
He will not be getting paid.
Okay, all right, as long as we're on the same page.
I mean, when you're blasting in the wintertime, especially, because everything's frozen, you're making fractures and fissures, and you're making new waterways. And now that the frost is coming out of ground, yes, I know exactly where he was talking about seeing the water coming out, and it would just found itself a new home, because that's where there was no frost and a fissure that it could come through.
And the other thing is, I talked with Tony, and I'd like to bring this up for the board. I know we said that we wanna try to preserve Rocks Road, but I think we oughta maybe do a little more than just preserve it. I think we oughta make it passable with some type of a road base for an other access, instead of going up Lindsay Road, we could come up Rocks Road at a future date. Whether we don't allow the contractor to do the work, but maybe we could do the work, contractor might be responsible for digging it out, and then we'd put the road back in. Some type of a road that'd be passable, and then have your gate at the bottom, just for situations like this. That's an option out there.
Okay, we're back to...
It's on a later date.
Is there a motion to...
Jan made the motion. I second it for discussion.
Okay, we've had discussion, are we clear on the conditions?
Well, no, because Jan came up with another condition, another option here.
Well, we're not, we're not trying to tell the contractor how to do it. He's gonna do it in a way I would assume that would be least expose him to additional cost, if that's one way.
Northern Construction's the outfit.
Biggest thing is to get the propane up into the...
Northern Construction is one of the outfits that have the material, the mats. It's just a suggestion, but I'm saying, yes, I did...
And my thought on this is, we give the contractor the options. We're not telling him what to do, what might be a problem. But one of the options, say, bringing the material up Lindsay Road has a heavy cost associated with it, the risk of damage, and him footing the bill for repairing anything.
Including a broken up road.
Go up to northern.
Okay, I made them, I did make the motions.
Ed seconded. Any other discussion, all in favor?
I.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You'll get back to us on, the big thing here is that lately, we haven't been being informed on a lot of stuff that's going on, and I wanna make an issue right now that we are informed. We need to know what's going on. When we make decisions at this table, we need to be told what the hell's happening on that end, on Phil's end, on Paul's end, everything. We need to be kept in the loop, otherwise, we lose it. And then when we find out, we get really upset, all right? Because we're not being told. So it's important, everybody share the information with us, so we know what's going on. So if we had to call an emergency meeting, we can, all right? Don't keep us in the dark, because it's only gonna bite somebody in the end. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Stanley's coming up here, I don't know why we didn't go get him.
Oh, I saw, I saw Bob Bartlett out there, so I don't know if it's Stanley or Bob.
Have a seat. We'll be right with you, Bob. We're waiting for one other person to join. Do you wanna?
He's gone.
No, he's gone, I know. Why don't you bring up?
Put us on hold.
No, no, it's all right. We've, we've got a couple things. Jan had a constituent issue on drainage. Elm Street, did you wanna bring that up?
Oh, yeah. I did have a informal complaint about some water gathering on that farmland where the, um, 55 and older development is. If you ride by there, you can actually see what, where they have built it up, and it is kind of sloping into that field. And you get a heavy rain, it does gather in there.
They need to put a swale in there to get rid of the water.
Basically what I said, if we can get a hold of, I, I talked to, I talked to Stanley about it. And he says that he was gonna talk to the developer, but I think we oughta send them a letter also saying that we.
Yeah. Because they cannot divert water on anybody else's property.
Right.
Keep it on hold.
So I'm, I'm basically bringing it up. And I guess I'll make a motion that we send the developer a letter just stating that we have an unofficial complaint and that we would like them to take corrective action.
Would that come under us or would it come under conservation?
Well, I mean, conservation, well, I'm going to bring it up to conservation, too. But I think if we send them a letter along with, you know, that we know about it, it would be.
Let's see, see it to the conservation so they, they know that.
Okay.
We're, we're behind it and, you know.
All right.
How you doing?
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Well.
Welcome back, Bob.
Uh, next topic.
Ninety-nine, huh? Could be sixty-six, too.
Next topic is agricultural building fees. Apologize, it took a little while to get back to you here. But we received a letter from the chair, the agricultural advisory folks, Mr. Wagner, concerning the building P permit, permit structure for agricultural facilities, comparing Hatfield to others, and suggesting that we reconsider the, the fee applied and reduce it, among other things. But Bob, would you like to?
Sure. I'm Bob Wagner, 221 Lindsay Road, and I am the chair of the Ag Advisory Committee. So we were approached by a farmer who just asked if we would, um, look at what other communities, other similar farming communities in the area are doing in terms of the building fee that's charged on particularly agricultural structures. And, um, as we understand, our current fee structure is we have a $35 flat application fee and then a 30 cent per square foot fee, or in addition to that. And so we looked at the other communities, particularly those nearby that are of similar agricultural nature. And there's quite a range, going as low as Hadley, which is five cents a square foot, specifically for agricultural structures. They have different rate schedules for residential structures, commercial structures, that type of thing. Sunderland is 10 cents a square foot. East Hampton, 10 cents a square foot. Even Belcher Town is a little lower than us at 25 cents a square foot. Deerfield being another similar agricultural town has a, has sort of an odd structure. They base their agricultural structure fee on the square footage, so it's a range. So if it's like from, you know, 10 foot to 200 feet, it's one thing. 200 feet to 500 feet, whatever, it's another. And so just looking at a 400 square foot ag building, uh, they have a $30 application fee and that $400 square foot building would be, um, have another $50. So it'd be a total of $80 for the permit fees. In Hatfield, given our structure right now, that same building would have a $155 permit fee. So just to give you a comparison. So our recommendation was that the Board of Selectmen consider, um, just for agricultural structures and additions, uh, renovations and new buildings, uh, exclusively for agricultural purposes and farm-related activities, that we consider, um, reducing our current square footage rate from the 30 cents that we currently have to 10 cents a square foot, which would put it in line with certainly Sunderland, East Hampton, will, will higher than Hadley. But the 5 cents for square foot seem extremely low. And that there not be any change in the application fee. It'd still be the $35 fee, but the square footage rate be dropped to 10 cents a square foot. And, um, and we did wanna point out that we wanna make sure that this is for buildings and structures that are related to agricultural activities. And so as many of these other communities do, that agricultural building permit rate is only on buildings that are on land that is devoted to agricultural use and they use the chapter 61A designation to determine that. So that you're not having, say, a residential homeowner who wants to put in, you know, what they consider an agricultural structure in their backyard and looking for an ag permit fee, that this would be limited to agricultural structures on, on farms or properties that are in the current chapter 61A. So it allows you to sort of really zero in on the, on the active agricultural properties and activities in town.
Aren't you kinda discriminating with that, Bob? I mean, what if the, for instance, over here on Elm Street, he wants to put up a greenhouse or something like that? And that's, you know, if that land was in his backyard, he couldn't do it according to what you're saying. Okay? And, and the other question I have, I guess, is what are you defining as, as agricultural structures? What's the definition? Tell me what, please tell me what the definition is.
Well, the, well, certainly, I could, we could look into Mass General Law to see if they provide any guidance on this. In the other communities, and for that matter, I think even in our permit, there's sort of a parentheses that lists, you know, outbuildings, barns, green, I don't know about ours with greenhouses, but some of the others will actually list greenhouses as one of the structures. So they give for instances of what these agricultural structures are. You know, I'm thinking that these would be, you know, service buildings, barns, not houses, of course. The houses would fall under a residential category, whether it's on a farm or not in terms of the building permit structure. To your earlier question, um, uh, you know, we're ma, we were making the suggestion so that it didn't appear as if we were just allowing, you know, opening this up so that anybody who wanted to put in a, you know, a garage building that they buy at Home Depot and put it in the back and say, well, I'm gonna use this for, you know, I'm gonna store my garden supplies in here. I think this is an agricultural structure, that we, you know, targeted to the agricultural land and uses in town using chapter 61A. But if it was the Board's desire to have that be opened up, you know, if someone can show, for example, you know, right now, the definition of a farm, uh, the USDA definition of a farm is any farm property that produces $1,000 in gross sales. You know, it's not hard to have $1,000 in gross sales. It's not net income. But, um, you know, so you could actually, you could do it that way, too. You could say that you actually have to prove that you are on a property, whether it's a residential property or one in chapter land, that, that meets that standard of USDA definition of a farm, you know? Because we do have a lot of, you know, backyard, back, um, backyard gardens where people selling far, on their farm stand and whatever. And if they.
Exactly right.
And if they, if they are registered or not registered, but if they meet the definition of a farm, then.
I, I could see res, uh, being agricultural structures being the hoop type.
Mm-hmm.
Structures that are put out there for greenhouses and stuff like that. But when it comes down to a, a barn, a structure, that kinda stuff, it's no different than putting it in my yard or your yard or anybody else's yard. It's still a structure and it still costs them X amount of dollars like it cost us. So, uh, I can see on the, on the hoop structures is one thing, limiting it to that. But I, I can't see, um, limiting it to the whole farm, you know, the, the barns, the garages, the whole thing. Because, um, the farms use it to, to house their, their equipment, just like the homeowner houses his equipment. Okay? Same thing.
So are you, are you suggesting that you would not wanna see the change in the building permit for those kind of structures or not limited to just the agricultural 61A properties?
Bottom line here, Bob, is the whole thing needs to be restructured, not only this. Okay? And I'm, I feel this board needs to look at the whole structure because when somebody, a homeowner, wants to put an addition up and he pays $1,600 in fees, okay? That's an astronomical amount, if not more. Sometimes some builders, uh, are complaining to me on, on the other end. And, and they're saying Hatfield is the highest around the area on their fees. So to me, the whole fee structure needs to be taken, looked at, not just that part.
Well, with, yeah, and as you can understand, we, we sort of looked at, you know.
Sure.
With our blinders on, we looked at what they were related agricultural structures and didn't really even begin to think about those others. Just to the point is that, um, you know, on a barn, I know there, you know, can be very big. You know, to me, whenever I see a tobacco barn in town getting new boards on it and new hardware, or I see a new barn getting sited or, or a new, or a, or barn getting new siding or a barn going up, to me, as an agricultural advocate, that just, I get pretty excited because no one does that unless they see the opportunity for that to return some investment to them. And that's only gonna come from farming. So to the extent that we can, um, you know, like Hadley and East Hampton and some of the others, allow people to do that in a way that, you know, pays our necessary expenses and, you know, make sure that we're checking and make sure those buildings are safe and have all the necessary, um, you know, meet all the necessary codes. But do it in a way that, um, we're also encouraging that investment because, uh, it's important to those farms and then therefore to our community.
Well, Stanley.
Back to the 61A. The 61A, you're gonna have a minimum of five acres to put this building on, correct?
Well, 61A has a minimum of five acres. That's right. And we, we were.
What I'm getting at is I know where, I gave Mr. Two. I don't wanna mention names, but neither one's got five acres on it. So we, it's gonna have over five acres to cut this back down to this price or what?
Well, Tim, we're getting, we're getting a little ahead of our.
Yeah, I mean, we.
But let's, how, how we make this legally enforceable is one thing. And the definition of what, what constitutes an agricultural structure.
Right.
And how we define that, that's important. But let's back up to the fee itself. What is the base, what is the basis for the fee and is it appropriate? You know, fee is supposed to collect your costs. Is it an appropriate fee structure, in your view, for the cost that you incur?
Well, we've had the same fee since 1980 and nobody's barked at it. They's always paid it. So now somebody's barking at it, so.
Everybody barks.
It's up to, it's up to the Board. If you guys wanna change it, change it. I mean, it's, the thing is, sometimes I had a couple of these, I had to go up to people and say, hey, let's clean up your mess because the plastic started blowing around and went to the neighbor's house and they aren't using them anymore. You know, stuff like that. Now you put them, all depends where they are. If they're out in Jericho or somewhere where they go, it's different, you know, it's out of, you know, something rips on them, nobody's gonna, you don't have a homeowner right next to you.
I just wanna say, there, there's been a lot of repercussion on the rates that we pay. Okay? People, when they do an addition, they do an addition to the house, they do a new house. Our rates are the biggest rates, the, the highest rates around. And they can't understand why because if we're looking to just, we're supposed to be looking at to recoup our cost. And when you take a look at what our rates are, especially on a whole house or an addition, it's way up there. And there's no way, when you go and inspect the property for four or five times, that it's gonna equal 1,500 to $2,000. Okay? That's what I'm saying. Our rates are way out of line with what's going on here. Okay? And, and we need to look at the whole thing. I mean, I think we all put up structures and we all paid the rate. Okay? And we all grumped about it because it's just way over than what we should be paying. And I think we oughta take a look at the whole structure and, and this whole thing.
Can I?
But today, we're talking about rate for agricultural structures. So let's keep it focused on what we're here to talk about.
If I may get back to that, um, so, uh, we, when we were making this proposal, we weren't necessarily thinking just of hoop houses. And I can understand that, you know, those can actually start to get torn apart, as you said, and blow around. We were thinking just more generally about agricultural structures, agricultural related structures, whether that's a hoop house or a new barn or, uh, you know, new, uh, uh, tool, tool building or a workshop. You know, we're, we're totally comfortable if the Board is interested in working on this with us and with Stan. The, we were being conservative when we suggested that it be at 61A, but you're absolutely right, Stan. There's a lot of very active farm properties and one of our members has one that's on less than five acres. We could do another, you could have another distinction. And it's easy enough, actually, quite frankly, to be able to, um, you know, prove, if you will, without much sweat, sweat, that you're grossing $1,000 or more in farm income. Because if you are legitimately running any kinda garden or even, you know, obviously a big farm operation, you're gonna do a Schedule F on your, your IRS. And it's all right there. You just bring it in and it's, you just be able to show. We do the same thing with the water rate that we provide farmers. They have to show their, because that's our income limit as well, or of rev, farm revenue limit as well. It's a rather simple way to do it.
You don't have to be a big farmer, Bob. As you know, I mean, I've got a thousand asparagus plants and that, that brings me, uh, if I wanted over $1,000. And mine just sits on an acre and a half. Okay? So, uh, you know, there's a lot of little, little farms like that, um, that this would affect also.
We, we agree. And, and that might be a place where the Board and working with the, um, with the building inspector put some limits on it. And as we said, some of the other communities do limit it to only properties that are in chapter land, which of course are not gonna be those because it's the five acre minimum. But you could also do it based on the USDA definition of a farm, which is, like I said, is quite, quite liberal at only $1,000 gross sales.
Am I on the right track here? He's mentioned it, storage buildings, you know, I mean, a storage building, usually the storage buildings are made out of wood. Okay? And he's mentioned storage, but that, this is strictly just greenhouses.
Well, that's what I'm, I'm interpreting as that, but Bob's interpreting something different.
Right. It's not, this isn't, this is not any storage building. If you wanna take and come and get a permit for a storage building out of wood, it has nothing to do with the greenhouse's part.
No, I know, but the, but the, the structure, the, the permit structure right now.
The fee is the same.
The fee is the same. That's what we're talking about.
But you were saying, okay, so that means that we're gonna start breaking fees down again differently for storage buildings, certain sizes, over certain sizes, uh, dimension wise. It's just like if you put up a, up to a 12 by 16 storage, it can be 15 feet off the side, 10 off the rear. You go 12 by 17, it's 30 off the rear.
If you put it in your yard, it's gonna be one price. In the same building in somebody else's yard is gonna be another price, which, that's not fair either. And they could be right next door to one another.
The reason we went to 10 feet off the back and 15 on the side is because we had a problem over on Plantation Road and Bridge Street. Nobody could put one of these things in the backyard. So that's when we changed the bylaw. Okay? So we're doing the same thing for greenhouses now, too, or what?
Well, we're not talking about the setbacks. I mean, we're just talking about what the fee is for the.
Keep breaking these things down. Setbacks are different.
I'd like to, I'd like to just move on this here, to limit it to the hoop structures for the time being. And then we investigate the rest at a future date.
Let's do the whole thing.
You wanna put the whole thing off and?
Well, are we talking about, is the issue now what the scope of this, the impact would, what it would affect? The type structures that would affect?
That's the issue. It is, it affects the structures. A barn, a garage, a house, not a house, a, a greenhouse. Could be a shop, could be a, uh, it could be a, uh, small greenhouse, a work area where you have a produce. Right now, the law says you have to have a, a refrigerated area to, for your produce. Could be that. Uh, these are all structures, and that's what Bob's getting at. Versus if the neighbor, if you wanted to do that on your property, you'd be paying a higher rate than a guy that had a farm right next door to your house.
If we, if we could decide one thing today, then. If we, if we could decide one thing today, then how does this sound? You'll have to tell us what the fee structure should be to cover down your fees, your, your costs. Now, the rest of it is defining what it is you want the board to approve in terms of scope of what's covered. What the definitions would be, so it's, so you could execute the thing in a fair manner. Now, are you saying that the ten cents versus the thirty covers your cost?
That's what he's saying.
Well.
That's not, I'm not saying anything. I already got the fee here.
I, I agree with you. I think what the building inspector should do is go back and figure everything, come back to us with what you recommend, because I, we can sit here and recommend anything we want, and you guys are gonna be losing money, and
You're the ones that set the fee.
I mean, you can work
You're changing the fees, not us.
Well, I, I just want to know for myself, what do you think you can do with the fee, if anything, before we decide we're gonna drop the fee? I mean, I, you know, for us, it's, I don't want to end up saying, you know, we're gonna drop the fee, but yet we're not gonna recoup anything, so I would rather have those two get together and figure out what you figure if we should drop the fee, number one. Okay? And second, if we can drop the fee, what would you recommend? Bottom one.
Now, one, I got one question. Bob, these fees that you got, when did these fees come into effect in these other towns?
They're all, they're current fees in their, on their, like, when we go to their webpage to their building permits.
But I mean, when were they upgraded, where they just, I mean,
Oh, I
I know, I know, for a fact, in Greenfield, they went from, they went up from sixty cents a square foot for a new house to a dollar fifty cents a square foot for a new house within the last two weeks, so.
Well, we haven't, we didn't look at resident, we were only looking at the agricultural structures, and they're all what are listed as the current rates as available to the public, so.
Okay, well
And this is all within the, well, we wrote this letter in February, I did the research, we did the research in late January, early February.
Is there a motion to have the building inspector identify as costs associated with the fees for agricultural buildings? And to work with the agricultural advisory committee on an, an enforceable proposal for the board to adopt?
One thing, you say agriculture, I'd say in greenhouses, period. Agricultural building, you got Swazis down there, sixty thousand square foot, but that's an agricultural building.
I, I know, that's
We gotta break this. Greenhouses, period.
Well, that's
Not agricultural buildings.
Well, we were looking at, ours, our proposal was on agricultural buildings. In fact, if green, you know, that greenhouse falling under that broader category.
What we want to act on is, what is enforceable and reasonable? If, if there needs to be some carve-out for different type buildings, then come back with that.
Basically, what is fair for everybody?
Well, the thing is, you're saying greenhouse versus agriculture. Agricultural building is a hoop building, you put them up. Okay, greenhouse. Agricultural building, it's all have, big buildings, they got peers, they got, you know, ten inspections. We're gonna charge the same for agricultural bits. Agricultural, we gotta keep either greenhouse or agriculture, you gotta keep that stuff separate. Two inspections versus ten inspections, you're gonna give it to them for the same price?
No, we're gonna, we're gonna listen very carefully to what you and Bob come up with, the scope here.
It could be that we have a different category for greenhouses and then agricultural structures, and the agricultural structures may, I mean, if it, if you feel it can work, be less than what it is right now, and maybe not as low as what we're suggesting, but as we said, I mean, that's, these other rates in these other communities are not for greenhouses, they were for agricultural structures, so and even in some cases, listing as barns and equipment sheds and things like that, so. And as I mentioned, Deerfield has this other system where they do it by range of square feet, and those are not greenhouses, those were act structures.
Okay, well, we'll get together and we'll look into it.
And you may, if I may, you may want to limit the, the size of the agricultural structure, not the greenhouse type thing, but against Swazis is a big building, or the eminent tobacco shop. I mean, that, that's an agricultural building, and just like the inspections that would be involved, or something like that with the bill. So I, I think it should be limited to, you know, forty by sixty or something, twenty-four hundred square feet. And then from that point on, then it may become more of a commercial agricultural building, which would require more inspections. Less concrete inspections, there's finish inspections, there's insulation, there's a whole lot more inspections involved than just a bare bones uninsulated storage shed.
Well, we want to do it right, not just pull a number out of the air here.
So you cover the cost.
So it needs a little more work to refine exactly what your, what the proposal would be.
So the motion is to have Stanley
Yeah, I already made the motion.
Work with Bob.
Sure, the agricultural advisory
Come up with some kind of a fee structure and
And definitions, so it's enforceable.
And also the cost, the actual cost.
Well, that's gonna be embedded in what he comes up with for fee structure.
Fee structure, okay.
Yeah, because we don't want the town
To be losing money.
I mean, but we also, if we can, provide an investment, an inducement for the farmers to, to, you know, improve and, and enhance their properties for their, for their businesses.
We also don't want to have the public get taken also on the other side either, okay? We don't want to charge three times of what we're making or what we're, what our costs are.
Right, and that's, to me, that
I make a motion
Yeah.
Have the building inspector, the assistant inspector, work together with the ag committee to come up with a plan, bring it back to us.
There you go.
Let me hear it a second.
Second, second, all in favor?
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Audit. Who are you? New citizen?
There is a little more of me.
Good for you. Bob was, Bob was in Florida for a little bit here.
Yeah.
Paul, audit, what did you want to say here? Well, let me, let me, we have the audit. Fiscal year thirteen, Roselli, Clark and Associates completed it, looked at our statements for fiscal year thirteen. We, we acknowledged and had a session with both the town treasurer and the town accountant. Talked about issues of improving timeliness, documenting some of our policies and practices, improving our system of controls, changing some of the accounting practices, and there was also some suggestions in the report about simplifying and reducing work to free up resources to do more important things. We also spent some time talking about what actions had already been taken to address some of those things and what some of the actions were planned to resolve those. So we had, we had a copy of today, what the town administrator put together in terms of documenting that discussion we had at, at an earlier meeting. Wasn't meant to not do anything that we need to do, but just putting pen to paper and, and laying out kind of our way ahead. First step in any problem is to identify the problem and assign responsibility, and that's what I think he's tried to do here. Couple of things, so we didn't have in here, and I just, for completeness, make sure we get them done. The ambulance abatement criteria, somewhere along the line, talk about the data security audit, and there was proposal that came in from DOR that might help us there. We're addressing the de minimis tax assessments in our warrant. The contract award sheets, someone making that up, and we talked about where would we get the quotes from, what were the reasons for a particular award? Driver's license check, Jan had some suggestions on how we deal with that. Electronic billing, we already voted as a board to authorize the collector to, to do that. That's up to the collector to, to execute. The only other point I had on this was, I'd like to have town clerk and, excuse me, the town treasurer and town accountant come back maybe once a quarter. Give us an update as to where they are, the actions they've completed, or any issues they're running into. Just so we keep it, keep it in front of us until we resolve the damn things.
It states in here, they're supposed to get together once, once a month, I believe.
Those are, that's for the reconciliations.
Okay, so
No, I'm, I'm just talking about, they've got a whole, yeah, a whole set of, set of actions to take here to
Got a quarterly status report.
Yeah, exactly.
Yep, I think that's, that's gonna be required, I think.
Anybody else have any other? Anybody else have any other comment on this thing?
No, it's pretty cut and dry on
Okay.
On our end.
We're all those who love audits.
I, I just want to comment on what Paul says, that, you know, that the quarterly report is, is needed. We said that last year and we didn't get it.
Just schedule it, and, well, let's, not to digress, but for a second, we, we also asked, and we need to have scheduled, for example, police, fire, give them their periodic activity report to the townsfolk, what's going on. And that seems to have slipped away as well. Anyone else have anything else on the audit?
No, I'm good, I know.
Expect we'll hear more about it. Public safety building. We had some contractual issues, recall, we went to an executive session on this a couple, couple meetings ago. Engaged legal support, and there's been some progress.
Yeah, the contractor has been onsite yesterday and today, and most of last week. Phil and I were there on Friday. It did appear that, at the contractor's request, actually. So we took a tour of the, the fire ambulance area, and it looked to be, you know, pretty much complete. They were still working on the police area. Looks like they were changing out the, the glass and the vestibule area once again. I'm not sure what the problem has been there. But they do seem to be making steady progress, and of course, you know, we set the deadline for them to be complete. That's coming up this Friday.
Okay. We set the deadline of eleventh, otherwise we'd pick it up and we engage
And we hired somebody to come in and
Hire someone to come in and, but they are making some progress, finally. Okay, any other discussion on that? Next item, budget.
I mean, we, a couple of things, changes since the last go-around. The main thing is that I got notification from the schools that, you know, based on, you know, the current enrollment at Smith Vocational, it looks like the original tuition figure that we were looking at was gonna go down by about fifty thousand dollars. So I made that adjustment. However, I did, in my discussions with the school, I asked them, you know, well, what is the actual, the actual, what is roughly the, the tuition cost for, you know, someone going to Smith Volk? And they said it's about twelve thousand dollars a year, so I added twelve thousand dollars to that, that tuition just because, you know, this is in flux, there's a buffer here so that we, you know, hopefully don't get caught short. So that leaves us, at this stage of the game, about eight thousand dollars under the levy limit. There's still some small numbers that will need to be, that I need to get. We probably will have an interest charge on the Smith Academy roof and window project that will affect this budget. I don't know what that figure is yet. I mean, it's not gonna, it's not gonna be a big number. But, you know, we're, we're in relatively good shape, I would say. Oh, the other thing is, the other number I'm waiting for is from the Board of Assessors, we will have some overlay surplus. We're expecting them to release, you know, forty-five to fifty thousand dollars in overlay surplus. And, you know, I'm proposing to use some of that money to replace the funds being used from taxation on some of the sewer debt, so that we can bring our levy limit down from, from the eight thousand dollars here, because that's still pretty close. So those are just, just a couple of, a couple of numbers still missing.
Okay, I got, I got
I got a question.
I got something.
In regards to, we did a pay restructure a couple of years ago, and we, there's, there are some people that are over the pay structure, okay, and I noticed in here that everybody got a two percent or one percent raise, whatever it's gonna be. And we talked about, a couple of years ago, about when somebody is over the pay structure, okay, over that dollar limit, that they, there would be nothing given to anybody in, over that limit until they catch, everybody else catches up to them, okay? I don't know if that's gonna continue, if we, it's only fair that if somebody's getting paid way over their, their limit of what the pay structure is, then if you add in another one percent, it's only getting further and further apart. You're certainly not gonna take away their money, but you're gonna keep them at a base until everybody else gets caught up. I, I don't know, you know, according to this here, everybody gets a raise, but people, there are people that are over that, their, their limits in the pay structure that, you know, really shouldn't get anything until they get caught up, until everybody else gets caught up on the fair side.
Yeah, well, you know, nothing's been decided yet on the salaries. This is just strictly based on, the finance committee asked me to plug in, okay, what's it gonna look like if everybody got two percent? So that's what I did, that's where we're at, and we'll
Yeah, we're not, we're not talking about that, we're talking, he's talking about something else.
Don't we have a committee in place to look at the pay structures and stuff like that?
We do.
We do.
Come up with a recommendation here?
The, the human, the human resources committee, they're not, they're not, you know, currently, all we're really concerned about is the classification system, and if people are where they ought to be in, in terms of, you know, we're not gonna be recommending that anybody get a raise. We wouldn't recommend that they get moved from one level to another, but, you know, we're not gonna get into dollar figures.
Right, but what I'm saying is, on this scale, the scale structure goes from this to, to the highest, to the lowest. Some people are already at their highest and over the highest.
Some people are over, that's correct.
So that's what I'm saying. How can you, because they're way over and everybody else is struggling to get up to that, okay? How, how can you give them their, the incentive of one or two percent, they're already over, okay? I mean, it makes sense to just hold them where they're at because they're being overpaid according to the structure here until everybody else gets caught up. People on the lower end are getting the shaft here.
Well, let's, since that affects across the board, let's defer that to a larger discussion with the finance committee.
Okay.
But we've never adopted that structure. We've just used it as a general guide.
But we never did either.
It's one thing for that individual, if they're beyond the, the range, to hold that person in place like you're talking about. I think it's another thing to deny them a cost of living adjustment. I mean, you may hold that person in place in terms of pay raises while you bring others up to their, their pay range. But I, I personally just see it as a separate thing about the cost of living.
Well, it's fine if you're on the upper end, on the receiving end, but those, that, those that are struggling to get Well, it's fine if you're on the upper end, on the receiving end, but those that are struggling to get more money, and they look at the people that are getting more, it's not fair to them, okay? So unless you bring the whole thing into balance and you give, you know, you take away from them and you bring them into the structure, and you give the ones that are on the low end, bring everybody up into sync, then it's all equal and then you can do what you want. But until that happens, there's an issue out there.
I do have, again, cost of living. You know, what? This is Bureau Labor Statistics, for the last 12 months, the cost of living's gone up 1.1%.
Yeah, I was gonna say 1%, yeah, I saw that.
So we're giving, this thing is suggesting 2% across the board. Over 160 people who are also town employees are getting 1.5%. That's all the school. You know, what is, what's right or what's fair here? I mean, should we?
Well, it's certainly fair if one's getting 1.5, the other one should be getting 1.5, because they're like, years ago, their loaf of bread costs the same as everybody else's, so, you know, if you're gonna give it to one, you should give it to everybody.
Well, you know, the 160 are the, under the school contract. The DPW contract, done a couple of years ago, when the economy had tanked and the Fed stepped in and said they were gonna manage the economy to a 2% cost of living. Of course, the economy never recovered and never got up to 2%.
I'm referring only to the non-contractual people here.
Well, I would propose that the 1.5% be the number that's raised. It's four tenths of a point, a percent over the actual cost of living for the last 12 months.
I agree with that. I'll second that.
Was a motion made?
Oh, okay.
I figured you said a motion, I second that.
I'll make a motion that we use as a planning factor, and we're not resolved yet, the 1.5.
Second that. I thought that's what you were doing, you were making a motion.
Okay, well.
Sounded good, Chuck.
Go ahead, discussion?
No, I'm fine, I'm fine with it.
All right.
I was just waiting for a motion.
Hi. Another thing. Help me, I thought, and I mentioned this to Paul yesterday, that last year, in the, into the 14 budget, we put extra funds in there to provide for bringing on the treasurer and an overlap with Louise, the existing treasurer. And in addition, we put some funding in there to cover down some consulting by the former treasurer when she left.
Right. That should be taken out of the.
Well, that was, that was, that should not, those were special, reasonable, the right things to do, the overlap, the consulting time. But those should not simply then carry over.
No, absolutely not, you're correct.
Into the 15.
That was, yeah.
That should be pulled out.
Should be looking at the previous year's budget before it was given, last year it was given, so you wanna go back to the year before, and that's where the figure should come into play, okay?
I've forgotten what the numbers are, I don't know, the five, but they should be pulled out.
Exactly, that's the same as in Phil's budget, okay? We've got, we've got leased property that's, the trucks, I think, are paid for this year, is that correct?
This would be the last.
Okay, so, and I think, I think it ends, I'm not sure when the ending is. So if we're putting in all that money again in this year, in his budget, it shouldn't be. We should be taking back and some of that back out of there if the lease ends, okay?
Well, he's only got in there what he needs to pay for his lease this year, right?
Yes.
The lease is in the operating budget, so, I know that.
But what I'm saying is, when we bought the trucks for $300,000, whatever the case may be, we don't have that anymore after this year, okay? We've got other things in the lease, but that can be taken right out. That'll be reflected in next year's budget. Next year's the last year. Fiscal, because fiscal 15, there's a payment. 15 is the final payment? Yeah. Okay, so that's when you back that one up?
Yeah, I'm just.
But same, along the same lines, right, exactly.
Okay, so you're gonna help us.
Yes.
Fair it out.
Yeah.
And then. Where did, help me on this. Remember we, the fire department came in here, and I forgot what the name of those tanks are.
Be a parent, Scott.
Because of the scale or something, and we told them.
SABA tanks, or Scott tanks.
I can't think of it. Anyway, we asked them to put it in the operating budget. And it's under 10, I don't know, maybe 4,000, 5,000, or 6,000, I forgot the dollar figure. Because they have expiration dates, so we didn't wanna put too many in, but just put in a few each year.
Oh, that was, they have to do a certification of things.
I just wanna make sure it's here, and I couldn't.
Yeah, if you look at line 35, Fire Department Emergency Management.
Yeah.
If you see, I know it's tiny, but for fiscal year 14, their expense request was $20,000. Well, 2860.
$26,300?
And then for FY15, that's jumped up to $26,330.
Okay, so it's 6,000 there?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, as long as.
Level funded, so they're good.
As long as, we promised the two, we just wanna make sure they get it.
I got a question back on number four, the Selectman's Emergency Fund. I know we put that 500, but 25, if it works.
That was your number.
What's that?
That was your number.
Yeah, but it doesn't matter to me, as long as there's a placeholder and then it's okay to go with $25. I guess my question is, is there a dollar figure that we have to maintain here?
No.
Or it can be just anything?
No.
Okay, then $25 works, that's fine. And hopefully we'll never use it.
And, well, again, I don't know if there's gonna be money or not, we've talked about this a couple of times, the certification of the treasurer.
You've only got one certification there, so the only one that would be certified this year would be Marie's. I don't think anybody else has gone through that, but you certainly, I mean, it's put in 3,000 because it's.
But because it's always been.
It's always been, so you could gain probably 2,000 out of that.
Yeah, well, I think it's actually a town bylaw.
A town bylaw, yes, but you have to.
It's a town bylaw, you have to be cert, you have to qualify, be certified on an annual basis, okay? In order to qualify for the $1,000. So before, in the Assessor's Office, we used to have a full-time person, and she qualified because she maintained her certification. So that is no longer there, okay, for full certification. So that's $1,000 off of that. The second one, the questionable one, is the town clerk, or town treasurer, I'm sorry, town treasurer, okay? Whether he's certified yet, and if he's not, then he doesn't get any money, okay? So that would be up 2,000. On the tax collector's side, she gets certified on an annual basis, so she gets the $1,000.
All we're suggesting is just, I mean, you can leave it there and it'll fall to free cash if they don't qualify, but.
Right.
Is there another couple of thousand that we could pull out of there?
Right.
Okay.
And then, I'd like to propose in, in, under 63.
63.
That's the Veterans Memorial. We just had that.
Yeah, I don't know why it was deducted, we fought hard to keep it at 1,000, but.
Well, it may have been me, but I thought I brought it down from 2,000 a couple of years ago. Remember that they did the plaques? Well, now they've got additional plates to put on.
Oh.
And Phil is gonna do the contractual work for them, so they'll use that 1,000 and.
So you want to change that?
I would just put that, if you could.
Bring it up to 1,000 again?
Bring it up to 1,000 again for next year.
We also use that for flags, too.
We do, we do.
Okay, so.
They do a periodic replacement of the.
And the flags are like $500 to put in the cemeteries, so we certainly don't.
Not in the cemeteries, these are the ones along the streets.
Yeah, so far they spent like $250 on flags.
Because I know there was flags there, so.
There are, it comes out of the same account.
But the last plaque was over 1,000, but they were just adding names.
Just adding names.
I know we paid out of this account, because the Veterans account didn't have it in his, for flags for the cemetery for Memorial Day, for the veterans.
We need to go and recheck that, because I think there is state money available for that purpose.
Right. But I don't wanna get cut short, and then all of a sudden, we're not gonna have flags in the cemetery, that would not be too good.
I thought the state paid for flags on Veterans Day.
Maybe this is, you can get ahold of Todd, I mean, Paul Dosterlin, and find out about that.
Anyway.
We wanna make sure that we don't cut.
I would move that we increase line 63 to $1,000.
I second that.
All in favor of that? And then. That was, that was about it. Those three things. Oh, one other thing, has, do we know if Finance Committee has voted deficit spending in snow and ice?
No, so they'll, we'll need to take care of that tonight.
Need to take care of that.
Okay, on winter roads, I don't see that in here, and I thought we had a $62,000 figure. On 49, it's winter roads.
Paul corrected, all you want in winter roads is what we had in 14. And he's brought that up, remember before you had the lower number?
I didn't see any increase, because it's.
That's okay. You just want it, because you don't wanna tie up money there, you have a mild year.
Right.
And you've tied up money unnecessarily.
Right, I guess, but my point being is.
We've satisfied the law by spending as much as we did, we budgeted for the prior year. So if you keep the same, then if you have a bad winter, you're authorized to deficit spend.
Okay, because I just thought that would be a little bit more, you know, a couple thousand dollars more, I didn't think, okay.
Just equal to or more.
Along your line of thinking, I wanna make sure that we have enough in there.
Earlier they had the wrong number.
You know, you just never know. You never know what it's gonna be.
Any other questions on?
We're meeting with the Finance Committee tonight, anyway, one line for one.
The warrant, next item. Oh, excuse me, related to the budget. I think Key redid the cover letter on our package to town meeting. I wanted to, I asked if we would do that, to bring that in line with our budget decisions. For example, improving sidewalks, remember earlier, in our end of January, early February deliberations, we were gonna fund 50,000 in capital, taxation for sidewalks in 15. We decided no, but I left it in there because it's also in the transportation bond bill, and if there's an appropriation against that where we get money, of course we're gonna spend it. But no, we took out taxation. And the other one was down on the water transmission line. We had in there earlier borrowing, but we decided we're not gonna go for that $400,000 by borrowing, rather. We are, and we already voted this to, under Massworks, to try and get a grant to complete that, that, to recoup that cost, essentially. And the rest of this is the same, so it's just a rewrite of the cover letter, consistent with what we've already decided. There's not much on there, is there? All right, Paul and the.
Yeah, well, we've gone over most of this. Yeah, just got on Article 4, we just found out what the transportation bond figure is for next year. So I'll be able to update that.
And it's not the big number we were hoping for.
No. On Article 5, shouldn't there be a debt exclusion somewhere in here for that $2 million, or even the one? This is for the roof?
Right, right, right.
Okay, it should say debt exclusion somewhere in here, because you've got borrow or transfer from variable funds. Is that the way it wants to go, or through a debt exclusion?
Yeah, I didn't think, I didn't think this was gonna be a debt exclusion.
Usually it goes through a debt exclusion, exactly. On something that magnitude of things here.
Well, we are. Well, the, the real amount is, we're getting reimbursed essentially 51%, take that off.
It's still costing us a million bucks.
Then the school is kicking in $350,000, so we added that to it.
Actually, our actual total borrowing costs are gonna be around, around a half a million.
Yeah, so that, to me, should be a debt exclusion.
A half a million?
The borrowing is a half a million?
We can discuss it tonight with the Finance Committee, but I'm pretty sure it's gotta be a debt exclusion on that.
Well, it's probably a good idea, let's put it that way. So, you know, I don't know. I mean, if the debt exclusion fails and you can still borrow the money, I.
No, that's it.
No.
Can't borrow the money, absolutely not, it's dead. That means the townspeople voted against it, period.
Yeah, that's right. So, well, we save this for tonight.
Well, we could spend half a million for debt, or over a million just for the roof.
On top of all the other millions of dollars in debt, we're really gonna.
But, I mean, half of it's paid, well, we got the 51% paid by the state, $350,000 kicked in by the school.
Still already put in how much?
300, and plus, they've already put in.
167.
167,000. So they've, they've got quite an investment in this.
But still, it's a half a million dollars, and then.
And further, this is the high number, because it reflects, for example, that different R-rating for the roof, that we're not, it's not gonna be used, which, so whatever they're gonna put on is gonna be cheaper, so it's gonna be less.
Including the construction costs for these buildings, and all of a sudden, it's astronomical, way more than what we talked about. And, you know, so it's no different on the school, so when they say it's gonna be cheaper, I need to see that.
Well, it's an easy choice.
Okay, on number 14, Article 14, the town vote to cease assessing the excise imposed.
About $2,200.
It's $1,700?
22.
$2,200?
Yeah.
Have we cleaned up all the language? That was, areas from the legal review?
Yeah, I've cleaned it up, the only thing that's still.
Was there something on medical marijuana?
If you go back to Article 10, it says it still needs to be defined. I don't really know what's going on here, and talking with Wilma, Bob Bartlett's the only one who really knows what's going on here, so I'm glad he's back now, because I need to sit down with him to find out, you know, what this is all about. I mean, it sounds like, it sounds like what was voted at town meeting was not. I mean, it sounds like, it sounds like what was voted at town meeting was not what was sent into the...
Isn't this solar electric cooperative, the ones who, that we didn't put on last year through the Hampshire County Council of Government?
No, that's net metering.
That's not metering.
That's in here, though.
Okay, as long as it's in here.
This is an amendment to the zoning bylaw. And I'd need to sit down with Bob to figure out what exactly that's all about. But other than that, everything's, everything else is pretty much together.
23, what am I missing here?
Well, just, well, before we go back to page 5, Article 18 and 19, I mean, we don't have to decide this now, but, you know... You know, I've just got a sum of money for the 350 celebration. You know, you guys need to be thinking about, likewise, 21, you know, thinking about where I have a sum of money. Well, what's it going to be?
Well, we got five years, five years for that. If we put, you know, maybe even $3,000 or $4,000 a year and...
We can start real small.
Like 20 grand.
Build it up.
Start small.
What's Article 19? What are we looking at?
18.
No, I'm looking at, yeah, I mean, that, okay. But then 19.
Well, let's do 18 first. You know, I thought maybe 5,000 at first, but I think that's a little steep with what we got. So if we could maybe do...
2,500 or something.
Yeah.
Just to get the fund.
Count it off, three, just to put a little bit each year.
There's 48 in the 325 account, so...
4,800.
4,800, yeah.
Maybe 2,500 or something like that. Just, just putting it out there. Folks, what we're talking about is we got our 350th anniversary. And under Massachusetts law, we can start five years in advance of that, the 350th celebration, put some funds aside for an event, a town celebration.
Right, so they'll have some seed money in case they have to do stuff years in advance and secure things and so on.
I'll plug in $2,500. And then on Article 19, I mean, Ed asked me to put this in here, but I have to tell you, we don't really need any furnishings.
I was going to say, what do we need for furnishing?
We don't.
Everybody here, she sits down.
We need new chairs.
You're going to be scratching the heck out of the thing.
We need new chairs in here, but I don't think we need a warrant article for that.
No, we don't need new chairs in here. Come on.
No, no, I mean for the head table.
These are fine.
These things, you're cutting the floors.
Roller wheels because this floor is going to be annihilated.
Phil's been looking into some chairs for the table here.
You know, and you want to get the ones with the rubber wheels. You don't want the kind that she's got on her chair.
No, because you know what's going to end up happening? Somebody's going to lean back and they're going to end up, and I don't care if it's a four-legged one or a five-legged one, somebody ends up, get a mat for here, a rubber mat, that's all you need. Seriously.
You can do that, too.
No, I'm serious because, you know, you got these roller chairs.
As long as we do something to protect the floor, that's all I care about.
Somebody's going to end up on your back. I've seen it, I've seen it. Trust me. A mat will do fine.
Well, is there, is there anything? That's a must.
The only need that I see is to get some, you know, in my opinion, get some matching chairs up here. Other than that...
I bet you nobody notices the chairs on the camera.
Phil's taking care of his office and nobody else really...
Was there some issue about downstairs, the air, either air conditioning or...
The dehumidifier.
Dehumidifier.
I'd rather see something like that or a humidifier.
That needs, we need, yeah.
It's $4,800.
Okay, that's, yeah, and you want one of those good ones that are going to...
I got it from Webb. I went to Webb and gave them the dimensions and that's what they came up with, $4,800. So you got to figure it's a $5,000 bill.
Yeah. So someone needs to pay for that. I'm just, before we...
So I'm not sure what we're going to have for a total over there after we're done because we've got, we've got telephone that's going in there, we've got cable TV that's going in there, and what else we have for services. I think that's about it.
Was it broadband's going there?
Broadband, yeah.
Yeah, what was the cost for the Comcast going in? Do you know, Phil?
The Comcast is going to be, it's under $1,000 for the installation, but the monthly total.
Okay, wait, 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 wait.
Go ahead.
I'm not trying to digress here, I know. We're trying to get done. But as, I think you have Comcast?
Yes, I do.
When your power goes out, you don't have Comcast?
No, I have nothing.
You have no T, no telephone?
No, I have nothing.
Okay. Is that the kind of arrangement you want to have for your emergency services building?
I talked with both Tom and Bill on that because I asked the same question. And they said Comcast has a program that they will call you on a number, like if you give them your cellphone or whatever, they will call you on a different number if they lose power. And I said, instead of having call you, we should at least secure one or two lines through Verizon to have a dual option of another hard line.
I'm just saying...
I don't care if they call you. What if I'm not at home? And my house is burning down and my alarm doesn't go off because their phone doesn't work? That's my question.
We're talking about this building here.
I don't care which building it is. Once you lose it, you lose it. They can call you.
I'm just saying, is telephone service for people calling in from all over the state potentially, if we had some significant disaster or something going on?
Yep.
Is it, is it important that someone be able to answer a telephone back here?
Absolutely.
Then would that suggest you go with Comcast?
You could go with either one.
I would go with Verizon.
I'm saying go with both as a backup, one as a backup and go with the major one with Comcast and then use a single line for a backup on Verizon just in case Verizon had power to their, you know, their communication lines. You could transfer Comcast would automatically forward all calls over to that one line. Or if there's nothing over there, they'd do it to the cell phones.
I'm not trying to tell anybody how to do their job, but think about the kind of operation you have there. And does it make sense to lose your phone service when you lose power?
Going through the big snowstorm a couple of years ago, the phone was the only thing that worked in my ass because I had an old-fashioned phone.
Right, yeah. That's why I don't want to give up a Verizon line.
So...
You want to have at least one line.
And then for three days, and by then, the cell phones were running out. And I was turning my cellphone off my laptop because I had power down.
On the other, the reason this transpired was because Comcast was willing to do this package, whereas Verizon was going to charge us something like $10,000 to do a study and then put the line in.
Pretty pricey to after a while.
Okay.
Like I say, I pay more for my Comcast than I do my electric bill.
But there was an issue there with the...
By a lot.
And they tried to, tried to...
But cost is one thing and having a capability for emergency services is something else. I mean, there's some trades there. And I just think, before you make a decision to go with a system that's going to lose your phone service for emergency services, I'm not sure how smart that is.
Well, that's why I interjected with them and gave them their thought, you know, before they start deciding they're going to go with just Comcast. They should look at the whole picture here, make sure.
Well, I guess, who's, oh, that's Bill. How about, how about asking Bill, Bill's in charge of emergency services, how are they going to communicate in a no-power environment? That's the question.
The power's not the issue. It's if cable is lost. The power, we don't have, we have power over there. That's not the issue. It's the cable itself if it's lost, okay?
If you have no power, the cable modems don't work.
That's right.
The electricity for the phones comes from the phone company.
Right, yeah.
Doesn't come from your house, ACs.
Well, my question to Bill was, what happens if the generator kicks on? Does that power up the cable?
No.
No.
It should.
No.
Because if there's no service coming from Comcast, you still have, your phone will work, but you'll have nothing connected to it.
If Comcast, if Comcast has their cable connected and there's no interruption, no lines down, you're going to have a signal, okay? We will have power...
If you have no power to your cable box in your house.
Right.
If something's coming from them, your cable box is not going to work.
But see, we won't have that problem over there because we have a generator. So there will be power over there that will power up that cable box. That's not, that's not an issue here.
Yeah.
That's been taken into consideration.
But if there, if there's stuff on the pole goes down, because those are all battery backup, and once they're down, that's it.
You're absolutely right, Jan.
And those only last about two hours.
I'm not trying to divert the conversation here, but someone needs to take a hard look at what system we put in there and budget appropriately here. And we need a system that works.
They were concerned, and that was, that was a big concern. My concern was that they have a backup, okay? If they're going to go that route, you have a backup.
Well, is there phone service, Verizon phone service to that building now?
There is, and that's what I said. There shouldn't be any charge to hook up that service right now. Okay, you've got two or three lines that are there, so you should put those...
That's what was originally there?
Put them back in there. Exactly right. And that's your backup line. Then you can do whatever you want. I don't care if you go Verizon or Comcast or whatever, as long as you have something there.
Right. Make sure you got communication. It's critical.
23...
Well, no, no, let's, the 19.
19?
What's left?
Do we want to put some money in there?
Yes. You're going to need a humidifier, dehumidifier down there. It's $5,000. That's right off the top.
So we leave that article there.
You're looking at five grand and approximately, if something goes with Verizon, you're going to end up needing 10 grand there. So you're going to need at least 15,000 or 20,000 bucks there.
And I would leave the article vague.
Yeah, so you could, exactly.
What do we got left on that, Billman? How much left over there?
Well, after, I think they, they spent like, I haven't seen the invoice yet, but $20,000 of worth of stuff.
They only spent 20 because they had a limit of 20. That's it.
So, so we're talking about approximately $40,000 left.
$45,000?
Forty, forty thousand.
Forty thousand, okay. And out of that 40, you've got to, if you're going to take what's left in the, is there anything left in the contract that we need to pay besides like Verizon, Comcast, any of the services?
I mean, you know, the $40,000 is after the contractor has paid in full.
No, no, I'm not talking about the contractor. I'm talking about what our obligation is, like to bring in if we, if we said, like Jeff, if Jeff says, well, bring in Verizon, it's going to cost us $10,000.
Yeah, we got to bring in the phone, we got to bring in, you know, so...
We got to bring in which perigis to hook up all the computers.
Perigis will have to come in, sorry.
Yeah, so there's going to be some... So you're looking probably another, it could be 15,000 to 20,000 on, to complete the building with just stuff that's got to get in there.
So conservatively, you probably have 20,000 left.
20,000 left.
Yeah.
Roughly, yeah.
Okay, and then, and then the rest.
So you could take the 20...
Can I make a suggestion in sequence? If you put what's now 19 after what's now 22nd, and you start off, then as you move into that cycle, create a town hall renovation stabilization fund.
Yeah.
And then vote to transfer from free cash a sum of money into that account.
Yeah.
Vote to another...
You have a flow.
The remainder of that 40, so it'll be another 20 down here in roughly 20K in Article 22 into that account. And then what is currently then, the 19, takes the rest of it and puts it into...
Article 22 will only happen at the end of the contract after everything is in there and it's up and down and we know how much money is left.
Yeah.
If it's not there, then we just table that article.
Yeah.
That's the bottom line.
Yeah, we'll just have to see.
Yeah. So that would be the last article in that sequence. That's what you're saying, right?
Well, I'm just saying, put 19, what's now 19 after all that. Establishes that town hall stabilization fund, puts money into it from two different sources.
I thought we were going to put 5,000 in for that humidifier off of that.
Oh, yeah, well, that's, that's part of the, part of the...
Could use a humidifier in here, too. This is dry as...
As Key coughs.
Phil, on something, on 19, new furnish, to fund furnishings and equipment.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
You've got to have a vague.
Furnishings and equipment should cover it.
Yeah, yeah. And don't just identify the building, right? What is the rate?
Right, there's no, shouldn't identify anything new or anything like that. Just put furnishings because we might, we might get second-hand stuff.
Probably will.
Exactly.
Is that that, Paul?
Yep.
Okay, 23, I don't understand the Finance Committee's objection. This is on OPEP, other post-employment benefits. But I highly recommend we keep it in there. Our town treasurer recommends we do that because the auditor, and the auditor has recommended we do that. It helps our bond rating and so potentially lowers to some extent our borrowing costs. And we're not putting any money into it this year. So I, I don't understand, yeah, all we're doing is creating an account. We have, from the audit, well, we have about a $2 million liability built up so far.
Yeah, I can't remember what it is.
I think it's about $2 million from the audit, so...
At some point...
At some point, we'll have to start putting money into it.
Well, the other thing I think we should look at at some point is to look how we distribute our funds, especially to retirees, okay? Because right now, we're spending a lot of money for people that have never even worked for the town of Hatfield, what their spouses have. And we're picking up that cost on insurances and stuff like that. And I don't know what the law says about it, but I think we should look into that and maybe revise that at some point. You can't, you can't change what's existing, but you certainly can stop it for any future use, okay? So I think we really should do that because looking at what it's costing us, if you guys look at the warrant and see some of the money that we're paying out there for, for people that never even worked for the town of Hatfield, it's staggering.
Okay, but that's a separate issue from this. I'm just saying...
It all goes with the benefit.
Maybe we can, maybe we can find out what, what their thinking is on this. But whether they support it or not, I recommend we leave it as we have it. It can explain why they'd like to pay more for borrowing. Just as we go through these, I've asked Paul, he'd give us, for example, the full text of some of these things where we say you can go visit the town clerk and get the, get the full text.
I'll have those for the next meeting.
He'll have those for us.
We have to have handouts at the...
Well, yeah, there'll be separate handouts.
And then we have to have them also.
Yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I'm talking about, so we can read them in advance.
One thing for sure on number 34, we want to make sure that that's the same consistent every year. These are the same that I didn't check last year, but is this the same as last year?
Yep.
Okay. Everybody understands what the, that whole...
On the last page. Is that a May date or is that an April date? I know it's blank right now.
Oh, oh, oh.
Right up in the bottom.
Right.
It could be May 1st. It could be an April or May.
We'll see, you know, the plan, the plan is...
What's the minimum posting requirement?
14 days, isn't it?
I always thought it was 14. 14 for special.
14 on the special, seven on an annual.
Right.
Okay, well...
So, I mean, we, we are planning on closing on it at the next meeting in April, but...
22nd of April now.
We could wait until the end of the month. We could do it on April 30th or something, April...
There's no penalty for...
No, no, but I mean, if for some reason we had to change something, we really shouldn't have to change anything, right?
My experience is...
Open as long as you can?
Keeping it as, open as long as you can.
All right, at least two weeks, we should at least do by May 1st.
No need to, no need to...
Well, our meeting is April 22nd.
No need to close on it until you have to.
April 22nd is our next meeting.
Things are constantly changing.
Let's plan on it for next meeting. Something's going on.
Right.
We can always differ.
Yeah, in this case, there could be a penalty for closing early.
Yeah, on our end.
Exactly. Because we can't change it. You can't change anything.
That's great. We're getting there. Committee vacancies?
Should have one, redevelopment authority is not on here either.
Yeah, there's two.
Yeah, those are, those are elect...
Yeah, but still, yeah, no, because they weren't filled, it's our obligation to, to see if we can get somebody, so you should have redevelopment.
There's two of them, I believe. Two of them on the, well, you go to the first, on the warrant, look at the first paragraph, Do we wanna talk about the energy committee now, or is, are we pressed for time? Save for time, all right.
It's disfunkt, or what?
There's only two people on it currently.
Who are the two people?
Mike Poshack and Dave Biddle.
Dave Biddle.
So, yeah, so... Okay. They can't even meet, they don't have a quorum.
No. Well...
Do they have any suggestions? Do they have anybody that's interested? Can you get back to them?
I haven't heard, I haven't heard.
Well, recall, we had a couple of discuss, discussions with the committee, and outlined what was needed, and it ended up, Paul did all the work here on the report and the grant request, so, anyway, we'll come back, we've got a hundred other things to do. Right now, we have two vacancies on the elderly and disabled taxation fund committee. Those are not designated by position, are they?
I thought they were, because I know when I was assessor, the assessors were on that, and I don't know...
These are all...
These are two at-large.
Two at-large, okay.
Two at-large, okay.
And then we have...
I mean, you probably, in all the years that I was on that, I, I think we probably only met once, and that was just to organize, and we really never had anything to do after that.
Well, I know our treasurer said, I think they've acted on a few.
Did they come up with a couple? No?
Yeah. Couple of an open space, again, these are at-large, not representatives of various committees.
Okay, but that's not what it says if, if it was...
Yeah.
It says vacant, but is it at-large or is it from our resources?
Yeah, I think some of those are designated positions.
Yeah.
In open space?
Yeah.
I don't know if this was passed by, this came to me meantime, but...
What should be is, it's either at-large, or it should be like selectmen's representative or school committee representative.
Right.
That's what we need to know here. That way we can, easier filling the position here.
We'll, we'll come back to it. Anyway, there's positions open, elderly, elderly and disabled taxation fund, energy committee, library building committee, and open space, and redevelopment authority, although there'll be two positions on the ballot.
And anyone that's interested in serving on any of these committees, please submit requests to Paul, and we can review and do some appointing here.
Phil? Anything for us?
I do. I do have a list of surplus equipment that needs to be declared surplus. Got more down there?
Yeah.
So in the midst of the two vehicles, as you know, they were both replaced, so we want them to be declared surplus, so we can put them out. And the rest of the stuff is things that were at the highway garage that we uncovered under the earthened...
Corner.
Earthed corner.
You've really cleaned it up a lot, looks a lot better.
Uh, so, you know, it's something that we don't use, we haven't used, and it was just out there, so this is the stuff we wanna declare and see if we can sell off as surplus. We don't use our power curber anymore? No. How come that, that, I thought we bought that to do our Cape Cod berms and stuff? No, it's not, this isn't the Cape Cod berm one, this is the other one, the big berm. The big berm, the high one? Yeah, we don't use that no more.
Okay, all right.
And then the paint shaker? We don't make, no, we don't shake our own paint, we just... Lines and stuff, they don't shake the paint? We don't, no. We have it, we, we get it from the company that shakes it. I know, but if it sits up there... No, because we don't use that much. I mean, it's just an old paint shaker that's sitting there that hasn't been used in who knows how long. I mean, when they used to paint their own lines in the road, they used to use it, I guess. Okay, what's it, a single, for five gallon, or? Yeah, it's a five-gallon shaker, yeah.
Okay, is there a motion to approve declaration of surplus, the items as submitted?
So moved.
Second? For a second?
Second.
On favor?
For discussion.
Aye.
I just wanna make sure this gets posted.
Yes, it'll be posted at town hall, yes.
Town hall?
Yes.
Possibly at the...
It'll be on municipal transfer station.
On municipal also. Yeah, we're gonna put some stuff on municipal, yes, but first we have to po, declare surplus at town hall. Well, why, why wouldn't you put almost everything on municipal? We will, we will, eventually, but the first protocol is to post it for five days at, at the town hall. Yeah, but I, I wanna make sure that, that we're using municipal. We are. That'll be the next round, all right? Because, I mean, even like the shake painter, I mean, somebody will think they can get it for ten bucks, and municipal might, you know, give you a hundred.
Yep.
I never, I never thought to ask, how are we, how are we using the posting? Isn't the posting, that these items are coming up on municipal?
Yes, this will be posted at, yes.
So, so you don't buy it just from this posting?
No, 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 no.
Yeah, okay.
No, it has to be posted that, that the board declares surplus for five days.
Right, okay.
And then we can dispose of it.
Great. So, but the, yeah, so people could bid on it on municipal?
Correct.
Right, yes.
Okay.
Only after the five days is up is what you're saying.
I'm saying, right.
Okay. Just, did you have any?
Do you have that record?
The, just for information, our chapter ninety...
It's on the DVD.
Oh, we can do it. We had chapter ninety funding, they gave us, it was an era, our provisional allotment is two-hundred-forty-eight thousand, five-hundred-fifty-six dollars, and that's take effect after the transportation bond bill is passed. It probably won't happen until the thirty-first of July, very timely for this season. Water sewer rates, we've talked about, and we're gonna hear more next time. We're gonna answer the AAB on the rails before one June, right?
Correct.
Okay, next item is the green communities grant application.
Yeah, just for your information, we're, it's, the, the grant is due on the eighteenth. So I'm just about ready to submit it, looking at these six projects, which are all in our energy use and reduction plan.
Okay, so it is consistent with the plan?
Yes, these all come out of the plan. And so we're looking at approximately a hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars in projects.
Great. This is a hundred-and-seventy?
Yeah.
Okay. We're eligible for a competitive grant up to two-hundred-and-fifty.
A bunch of them, a bunch of them have utility incentives as part of it, so, so that's that. Well, there are certain, I'm trying to think of which one, oh, there's, there's the motors, the motors being proposed for the pumps at, at Smith Academy, you know, if you install these things, the utility will pay for part of it.
Yeah, because it cuts down the, the speed of the motor to...
Right, right.
For like, to an idle speed.
Right.
So it uses like a quarter of the energy, you know?
Yeah, so, so, you know, just for your information, that's going on, and then I've been working on putting a charter together for the board of selectmen, which I thought would be a good idea, so that's just in there for your review.
Is there a motion to approve the acknowledgement receipt, this letter from the conservation commission?
So moved.
Concerning application of herbicides. Second?
Oh, that already...
On favor?
Aye.
That's it. Okay, next time, we're also gonna cover warrant, any final things on the budget, and we're gonna have our honoree here.
We can.[1669.82]